All right, let's go ahead and begin. Welcome everyone to the Millbrae City Council Special Meeting of September 8th, 2020. This is a study session on the El Rancho Development Project, Anton Development. We have a roll call, please.
Glasses, glasses.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Papin.
Here.
Councilmember Leva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Mayor Holliber.
Present.
All councilmembers are present.
Okay, so let's begin, maybe if we can start with the city manager or presentation.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
When do we do ex parte communication update?
We can ask the city attorney on that.
You could do that now.
Would you like to go about that?
Action before the council at the moment, though, so.
So we don't have to do ex parte for a study session?
No, you really don't.
Okay.
Make a note of it so you remember what to say, because you kind of still owe the report, but yeah, there's no votes tonight.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks Mayor.
Okay, city manager Williams, would you like to begin, or how would you like to proceed?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. I would like to introduce Roscoe Motta, also our planning manager. He and I are going to tag team on the presentation this evening. And then once you receive the staff report, then we'll hand it over to the applicant, applicant Anton Development for their presentation of the council and then open it up for questions and answers and discussion. So with that, I'd like to ask Roscoe to start the screen share for our presentation. Again, as mentioned, this is the Anton Development Project located at 1100 El Camino Real. I think most people know it as the El Rancho Inn Hotel Site.
And Mr. Williams and Mr. Motta and everybody, if we can just be mindful of the time, because we have only an hour and a half here. And the applicant is also going to be giving a presentation and we need time for council input and also public comment later on this evening.
Yeah.
So yeah, if you could please begin.
Will be quick. So just the next slide, Roscoe will go over the overview. So Anton is proposing a 384 unit apartment complex, of which 5% are affordable in the low income category on a 5.5 acre portion of the existing El Rancho Hotel site. The project proposes a complete demolition demolition of the El Rancho Hotel, leaving a remaining 1.2 acre site as commercial, which would become a vacant parcel. Currently, the developer has not filed an application for the replacement of the hotel or any other viable commercial land use. I know there's been a lot of correspondence back and forth, but I wanted to note here upfront that there is no application for a hotel project. The application that is pending for review includes a design review permit, lot line adjustment, and sequel review. So the discussion and I think key points in tonight's study session is to review the project background and timeline, discuss the unresolved issues, including the negative fiscal and economic impacts to the city as a result of the project, compliance with the city's adopted general plan and zoning code, sequel compliance, new state legislation known as SB 330, and Housing Accountability Act. We'll review the site design and circulation, architecture, on and off-site improvements. And then once again, Roscoe has completed with his presentation, we'll hand it over to the applicant for their, for their presentation. So I will now hand it over to Roscoe Motta, the city's planning manager, to bring the council or to bring the presentation forward to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. As Mr. Williams mentioned, I'm Roscoe Motta, project planning manager, and we'll be making a presentation tonight for this project. The site, also known as 1100 El Camino Real, is northeast of the city. It's a northwest of Marino Vista Park neighborhood along El Camino and Center Street. The existing site is zoned commercial and is also designated high density residential and the general plan, commercial land use designation. The El Rancho, the existing hotel, has two eight-story buildings, eight two-story buildings, 220 guest rooms, an outdoor swimming pool, fitness center, restaurant and bar with 246 person capacity, and also employs 108 employees and accommodates up to close to 600 guests and operates 24 hours a day. So kind of just giving a brief timeline and sequence of this development application. The first application for its development project was submitted in July 2017. At that time, the application included a planned development, which also included the hotel, 218 residential units, and then 152 hotel keys, as well as 326 vehicle parking stalls. As you can see, here's the image of what that project looked like back in 2017. We received a second submittal a year after that, which also included a planned development and the hotel. Here's an image of what the hotel looked like at that point. There's some commercial components. Pretty much the same project specific, but it also included the planned development and the hotel in this development application. Last year, the previous two applications were withdrawn and they removed the hotel as well as the planned development components of the application. The project consists of 384 residential units, of which 5%, 19 units are the very low affordability level. It also includes 560 stalls for vehicle parking and as well as 72 bike parking spaces. So the current project, as it stands today, is a lot merger and a lot line adjustment to realign parcels to create different parcels, one of which is the 384 unit apartment community, which also includes 549 parking stalls. The other parcel, I'll move to the next slide here. The other parcel, which is a budding El Camino Real, has a potential to contain a hotel, which was shown in the previous applications. However, that was withdrawn with the current application and is not currently part of this proposal. Under the proposal, the entitlement would be to entitle a residential community on the 5.5 acre lot. And the 1.2 acre lot would be currently be vacant under the development proposal. Just give a brief overview of the general plan and zoning for this particular property. As it relates to the development proposal, and it's located in R3 zoning district. That zoning district allows 43 dwelling use per acre, one unit per 1,000 square feet of lot area. Given that the project contains 5% very low income units, they're entitled to a density bonus, which allows 52 dwellings per acre. The proposal is 69 dwellings per acre, which is allowed with a planned development permit. And the general plan designation, the general plan policies, LU 1.2 residential densities subsection C says that the high end of the range is achievable under the general plan when there is a planned development zoning designation. I should note that the applicant has requested a waiver of the one unit per 1,000 square feet of lot area, which is essentially the, the density for that particular site. And we are allowing the 69 dwellings per acre as proposed, but with a development permit, planned development permit. Several housing, see housing laws apply to this project. Housing Accountability Act is one of them. The Housing Accountability Act curbs the capability of local governments to deny, reduce the density of or render in feasible housing development projects if the project, if the housing project applies with objective general plan zoning and subdivisions. And you should, you should note that the city does not intend to deny or reduce the density of the project consistent with the HJA and said implements the general plan requirement that establishes a procedure to achieve the requested density. Also should note that the city may reduce or deny the density if there are specific adverse impacts to public health or safety that can. Another state housing law, SB 330. This, this law says that a housing development can only be subject to the ordinances, policies, and standards adopted in effect when a preliminary application is submitted. It essentially freezes all fees applied to the project and those ordinances and policies and standards in place at the time of the application, the pre-application was submitted. And there are some exceptions, which include sequel mitigations and significant quantifiable, direct and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions as they existed on the date the application was deemed complete. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Williams to present the fiscal and economic impact.
Thank you, Roscoe. So in terms of the fiscal impact of this project to the city, there are two areas. One is the recurring operational cost, which is how much does the project generate in annual revenue, tax dollars to the city per year versus the cost to the city to provide services to the new population? And then the fair share cost to mitigate impacts on city infrastructure, meaning new parkland, storm drain improvements, street improvements, water system, sewer system, reclaim water, those types of infrastructure impacts. So the cost to provide services to the new population is significantly more than the revenue generated by the project. Under item two here, there is a negative fiscal impact that is associated with the project, and it is significant to provide basic city services. We had mentioned the elimination of the hotel, which is 108 local jobs. We haven't quantified what that direct and indirect economic impact is on the loss of 108 jobs. But we do know that the current hotel, the El Rancho, generates over a million dollars in revenue to the city per year. Now, that's non-pandemic crisis. I think there is a letter from the applicant earlier today that communicated what the $2020 were, but we understand that. But long-term for the city, the El Rancho Hotel has been a very viable economic producing project for the city. Of the developer's letter that we received this afternoon, using their numbers, which are a little bit higher than the city's numbers. I think our numbers in our staff report were about $350,000 in annual revenue. But just using the developer's numbers, they claim that their project will generate $526,885 in total revenue or $489 per capita. Now, the city's general fund per capita is $30 million. We have a little bit more than 22,000 population. And so to service recurring operational costs, meaning police, fire, street maintenance, park maintenance, recreation, library, for example, we spend $1,364 per capita. So the project, as it currently is being submitted to the city, the city would have to subsidize the project by $875 per new resident per year or $943,000 per year. Now, how do we get to that number? The project will generate about 1,078 new residents. That's the 385 units and the persons per household at 2.8. That's how we get the 1,078 new population. So the last bullet, we cannot adequately and safely provide services to the new population if this issue is not resolved. We, we talked to the developer about it, the applicant about it, and it's something that remains outstanding, but, but an issue that we desperately need to resolve and hope that the applicant will come to the table and sit down with us to, to work this out, to maintain a feasible project for them and a feasible project for the city that is not going to be such a detriment in our ability to safely serve the new population from the project. Next slide, Roscoe. So as I mentioned, besides the recurring operational costs, the city does have infrastructure that it must serve. And that infrastructure is based on new population that any project generates. I think since the late 1940s, projects in the state of California have all been subject to paying their fair share of their development impact. And so we've been talking to the developer about paying their fair share. Under our newly adopted development impact fees, that cost is a little bit over $18 million. The developer cites SB 330 newly enacted housing legislation that took effect January 1st of this year, that they are exempt or don't have to pay those development impact fees because our fees are our new fees. Now, I think that this is an issue that needs to be resolved. I think that the SB 330 legislation perhaps never intended for cities not to be able to collect its fair share. And, and the law seems to be silent to some extent on this issue. The other issue that we have is even if that is the case, our current general plan, just as the applicant is using the general plan policies in our land use element, in our parks and open space element, which is a required legally mandated element of the general plan, we require two acres of parkland per thousand residents. Or the developer has the option to pay an in lieu fee. So at a minimum, to mitigate the impact on our park and recreation facilities, the applicant either needs to provide two acres of public open space and park onsite or pay the in lieu, in lieu fee to be consistent with the general plan to mitigate the two acres per thousand. The table below this just is a, is a quick overview of what our adopted fees are. Library facilities, capital improvement, general government facilities, recreation facilities, public safety parks, mobility, which is transportation, administration. All in all, it's 40, a little more than 47,000 per unit or 18.17 billion in development impact fees. So this is an issue that remains outstanding. So I now had it back over to Roscoe to take you through the actual architecture and site planning of the proposed project.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. So back in May of 2020, the planning staff took this project to the planning commission and solicited feedback from the commission on various aspects. The circulation, the design, and we received several, several points of feedback here from the commission. Essentially, there's a lot of discussion, but we basically boil it down to these bullet points. So pedestrian bike circulation, streetscape improvements, community benefits, architectural design, parking garage, community outreach, reference to local history. There's some discussion on the hotel, and then there's also fiscal impact city that was requested. So this is the, the current site plan. This is El Camino Real, which is on the right side of the image. And there's also the, the hotel parcel adjacent to that, and then the residential community, which is largely accessed off of Center Street, although there is an entry off of El Camino that leads into the project. As I said, the hotel parcel is, is currently vacant. There is no assurances the hotel will be built, but they have explored that possibility in their environmental document. These are some improvements that, that the city has been working with the applicant on. Improvements to Center Street. As you can see, there's median improvements on El Camino, which is on the left side of the image in green. Those are some landscaping median improvements, as well as enhancing the connection between the sites and the corners of Camino and Center Street. The applicant has agreed to make improvements to the frontage along El Camino and Center, all the way to the corner. However, there's still discussions ongoing regards to other improvements. I should also mention that they did agree to Center Street improvements as well as these ball dots. This is a slide basically that depicts the architectural design, the mass and the scale. There are, the buildings across Center Street are three-story multifamily and duplex units. These, the building is insulated, so as you can see, there's ideally, you'd like to have steves that connect to Center Street to engage the pedestrian and activity on the street. But in place of that, you have retaining walls and substantial vegetation to screen the building from outside views. Here's a image depicting the pedestrian realm from Center Street. There's a bike lobby here and there's several trees. Now, this image and as well as the, the following slide, you'll see the, the trees on the inside of the sidewalk that's been changed in the recent rendition of the plan. So the trees are actually, trees are actually on this roadside between the sidewalk and the street, which is an improvement to the streetscape. As briefly mentioned, here's a streetscape and sidewalk. So there's a five-foot walkway with 10-foot decorative benching right of way for communities to either sit or for landscaping. We're working with the applicants to kind of enhance and to make this pedestrian realm a little bit better. But here you can see some of the improvements that are being made to the, to this, to the Center Street. One point of discussion, the planning commission meeting in May was the, the garages. It's viewed from the neighboring residential community to the east of the project across the train tracks. The Rio Vista neighborhood. And the back of the garage seems to turn itself away from the, that neighboring, neighboring, those residential units. And so the staff and the commission agreed that improving this elevation would be a benefit to the neighborhood and that it'll provide a nice welcoming elevation as residents drive or walk east, westward from, from their neighborhood. Here's a, here's the images that depict the project. And as you can see from the layout, the building is very insular. There, there are areas that are common space, but are private open space for the community, for the residents of the building, rather than publicly accessible open space. So it really does not lend itself well to engaging the rest of the community. So the status of the future hotel, it does not include a hotel component. The 1.2 acre parcel adjacent to El Camino is close to be vacant on current application. There are no assurances that the hotel will be included, although I believe there are plans to do so. But as it stands, if the project were to be entitled today, that piece of property would be undeveloped. So here's the resolution of the issues, the fiscal impact, loss of the hotel, the timing of occupancy of the new hotel, the, the planned development permit and remediation of the development impacts. And with that, I can now turn it over to the applicant who can present their project.
Or Ms. Mayor, before the applicant, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have as staff or let the applicant provide their presentation, either way.
Yeah, I think I would like to go to the applicant next, and we can have questions from the council after the presentation is complete.
All right, good evening. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Really appreciate everybody taking the time out of their busy lives tonight to hear us on this project. We're very excited to be here tonight. We've been working hard with city staff, Mr. Williams, Roscoe, Linda, and the team. We thank you guys for all your hard work that's gotten us to this. I think we've got some nice renderings that we can all be proud of. And I know there has been, as mentioned earlier, a lot of letters that have gone back and forth, one of which that we submitted today for public record. But it's important to note, we've been working on the site since 2016 and well before the pandemic. And, you know, we're still here now. We're, we're big believers in the community of Millbrae, and we're big believers that, that we can really deliver the highest and best use for this particular site. You know, with that, we, we recognize that the El Rancho is truly priceless for the community. But at the same time, the viability of the El Rancho has pretty much dissolved. You know, the pandemic is the final nail in that coffin. And so we feel now is the time, more than ever, to make the change. And, you know, with that, we appreciate the importance of the fiscal impacts of the TOT and the pre-pandemic levels that the El Rancho was, was contributing. And, and for that reason, I'm not sure if this was in the staff report, I didn't see it. But I want to make sure the city council is aware that in January of 2020, we made, before the pandemic, we made an offer to make a $1.2 million payment to the city's general fund to kind of bridge the gap of the TOT whilst we were going through construction. On that, that offer was obviously made before the pandemic. And the TOT that is being dispersed now from the property is much less. However, that offer still stands on the table. We are trying to be good partners with the city and deliver something that we're all proud of and only makes the city a better place. You know, moreover, on that, we're really focused on simplifying the process and not overcomplicating it, which is one of the reasons we chose this site. It's an underutilized zone site that, again, we, we feel we can really deliver the highest and best use moving forward for the entire community. And so with that said, you know, I'm here to kind of give you a little bit of background of Anton Devco. My name is Andy Davidson. I'm the managing partner that oversees development and construction for Anton Devco. We are a fully integrated company, which means we are the developer, we're the owner, we're the contractor, and we're the property management company. And we're not a merchant builder, so we're here to stay. We're here for the long haul. We've developed over 10,000 multifamily units across California, and we maintain and own most of those projects till this very day. We've been in business for 25 years. I've been with the company for 15 years, and I can speak firsthand about the fact that we really immerse ourselves in the communities that we work in. On your screen before you, you'll see some of the properties we've recently built or are building in the Bay Area. And of most recently completed was a project in Menlo Park. Anton Menlo is completing 2018. So the pictures on the screen kind of give an idea of what, what that project looks like and kind of the same theme that we're looking to deliver with the Anton Millbrae project. Next up, we'll talk a little bit about the project site. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that drew us to the site was it being zoned and, you know, a viable site for this kind of housing. And moreover, is, is the transit friendly? I mean, you all are very well aware of the location of this property and the bus stops and the railroad and the bike routes that go through it, the location in downtown Millbrae. So we feel that this type of property will really deliver a community that residents can and walk around and not have to drive or take public transit. So it'll really limit the use of cars is, is the goal. Currently, the layout of the site, this is kind of a crude graphic of the zoning with the R3 zoning and then the commercial zoning. So as mentioned, we are looking to do a lot line adjustment and actually give back the property for the future hotel so that we have enough property to actually execute the construction of a hotel. These are, as you know, you are all very familiar with the site. These are the kind of current conditions of the site. So again, you know, underutilized two-story buildings, lots of pavement, overhead power lines. And those are all things that we're looking to kind of upgrade between our apartment community and the future hotel. On, on the screen now, you have your illustrative site plan. So we saw this before with Roscoe's presentation. And you, you've got very large amenity space that the building wraps around. That's going to have the clubhouse, that's going to have the outdoor kitchens and parks and spa and pool and things that we'll hear more about from our design team. In the future hotel, I know that's a, that's a big topic of conversation. And so with us tonight is our partner on the hotel, OLS. They are currently operating the El Rancho and will be working hand in hand with us in the development, construction, and operation of the new hotel, which we're, we're dubbing a lifestyle hotel, which we'll get into in here in a moment. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Ben, who, who will take us through kind of OLS and what they bring to the table.
Sure, yeah. Hello, everybody. My name is Ben Rafter. I'm the CEO of OLS Hotels and Resorts. As Andy said, we've been working with Anton since day one for Anton in 2016. And have, have really been effectively extending the. Have really been effectively extending the the useful life of the El Rancho over the last four years including now we've we've kept the hotel open during COVID. Despite a fair amount of pain because the El Rancho's audience right now skews a little bit older. And thus it's been impacted more than some of the airport or the other hotels in this subregion and the airport region as a whole. But that has allowed us to keep operating keep about 40 of the jobs in place. And also work with some of the community members in terms of the the fire that displaced some people a couple of months ago and a couple of other opportunities we've had to work with with the city. OLS itself has been around for 30 years. We are headquartered in California. We have 11 of our 34 properties in California. We specialize in what I'll call the lifestyle sector which is generally includes hotels that are. A little more active than residence inns and courtyards and Hamptons that you might be familiar with in the broader airport market. All that said, we have relationships with every major hotel brand in the United States and we have talked to all of them about this particular project. What we envision here. To replace the current El Rancho is a similar sized hotel slightly smaller. But a little more vertical versus the the current campus layout if you will right now. We plan to brand the hotel and because of that the reason for this is because in. Markets like this one branded hotels associated with the big flags like Marriott or Hilton tend to perform better than. Independent hotels and that's generally true in macro airport markets throughout the the United States or throughout the world. As well as the communities around the airport. All that said, we when we planned this hotel out we were looking for opportunities to make it a little bit more a part of the community. And thus we wanted to keep some of the dining and social spaces that are that have historically been in the hotel and so. You'll see in our hotel plan we do have food and beverage and we do have. Sort of a lifestyle scene facing the facing El Camino realm. Here are a couple that we've talked to. We are talking to the flags as I mentioned but all of the flags have sub brands. And within those sub brands you have different types of properties. Some are extended stay like the residence in that that is coming in. Some are called select service like a courtyard by Marriott. When we went to the flags and we're using the three biggest flags, the three of the four biggest flags here Hyatt Hilton and Marriott as our examples. We asked them to work with us on a product that would be a little bit more lifestyle oriented would be a little bit more comfortable for people from the community to visit. Would differentiate from just a plain old quote unquote airport hotel and it'd be something that we could program into the community a little more actively. And so as an example Marriott Hilton and Hyatt have come back with three of their. Limited lifestyle products AC by Marriott Tempo by Hilton and Hyatt recently purchased actually a California company called Joie de Vivre. And they are launching their Joie de Vivre subproduct. All of these feature more. Upscale and active scenes and and in theory it would be a place for local. Residents to go to rather than just peer overnight airport guests. This is an example of the bar that we've envisioned. We we named it the right stuff, a little nod to the history of the hotel and this would front El Camino Real. And be a welcoming experience both as a great experience for an airport traveler but also a great experience for someone who either needs to be in this area for business. And of course residents living there and we think we think this is really important here because there are dozens and dozens and dozens of product in competing. Locals around but most of them are a little bit more generic in the experience that they offer. And so we we've skewed the other way trying to offer something that somebody that is here on business or as a local would say hey I would stop by that hotel or hey that hotel does have. Something more to offer than kind of just the the Hampton or something down the street. It's perfectly fine brand but it does not have activated food and beverage.
Thanks Ben. And so as Ben mentioned, we still have letters of interest from many of the major flags. And one of the thing that's really important, the big question is why don't we have our hotels part of this application? First of all, I do want to make sure everyone knows that we are processing the hotel with the environmental document right now and so we are serious about about building the hotel. But. As we've we've articulate tried to articulate a few times the the key for hotels and hotel flags is the site needs to be ready to go. They have a short time period where they are once they agree to the site. Between that moment and the moment you actually start construction and so when we were processing this application early on we were unable to meet those those timelines. The processing of the application was taken too long and so we lost one of the hotels or we lost the hotel flag we had under contract. So it's very evident what we need to do is we need to get this site business ready and that's what we're here trying to do right now and so Garrett if you take me to the next slide. Um, I want to make sure we all understand the timeline that we're working with. So ideally we get the apartment design review approval late part of 2020. That allows us to start construction and by the within a year towards the late part of 2021. So three month construction process project for the apartment side. So fall 2024 is when we'll be complete. The hotel, once we have the site business ready, we're able to select a brand late part of this year and then within the next year get design review approval. And start construction within the year after that. It's important to note that hotel construction is much quicker than apartment construction and so ideally we'll be able to deliver both projects both construction sites right about the same time. This is advantageous for a lot of reasons, obviously for the new residents of the new community. It is less of an impact for the residents of the existing communities all around is less of an impact because we're not extending that to a five years of total construction. It's all kind of concurrent. And it's very important that we start the construction of the apartments before the hotel because all of this site work and the utility works that will serve the hotel are done as part of the apartments. That's on the our proposed plans as it is now and that will be on the construction documents when we go to building permit with the apartments. Next up, well, really what we're here to talk about tonight, we're really excited to be here is the Anton Millbrae residences. And so again, as I mentioned, this is redevelopment of an underutilized site. It's it's a transit oriented site. We're offering affordable housing for not just low income but for very low income households. We're going to beautify the neighborhood. We're going to get rid of those overhead power lines. We're going to add lots of nice vegetation and landscaping. We're going to widen the sidewalk. We're going to make that path from El Camino Real down Center Street. Much nicer for the residents, not just of our community but of all the communities around. Obviously, we we talked about the facilitation of the new hotel construction and once once both projects are up and running with certificates of occupancy, there will be enhanced revenue for the city of Millbrae. So with with the kind of key statistics of the apartments, 384 new apartment homes as we've heard earlier tonight. We're going to have studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms anywhere between 500 to 1300 square feet. 19 of those units will be very low income units. Which which targets the 30 to 50% AMI and which is obviously a big, big help to meeting the Reno obligations for the city of Millbrae. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to the brains of the operation here our design team. We've got Fred Metzger with KTGY. We've got Mark Schatinger with MJS and we've got our civil engineer on the line Casey Johnson with BKF.
Thank you. This is Mark Schatinger with MJS principal. I'd like to talk about the structure of the plan and circulation. So we have our main entry drive off at El Camino Real. We know how important the drop off at the hotel is but we're also extending that importance. All the way to the front door of the apartments as well and then out towards Center Street. So that whole area has been enhanced with mature landscaping, enhanced paving. And then we have the garage entry further down Center Street. So there's three really ways you can approach the project. If you're a resident, you'd probably just go straight into the garage, make a left turn, a right turn off El Camino Real and go down. Or you could either go in the main entry drive off El Camino Real or in off a Center Street. We have the enhanced Center Street experience. We'll talk about that later. And then for fire protection, the fire department's asked us to provide a fire lane all the way around the backside of the project. But we've also enhanced that as well. That's an amenity for the residents. It's a big linear park we like to call it. And the amenity hub I heard a comment how it was closed off to the to the project. You'll see in some exhibits that are further in the presentation as well. We really wanted to make that. We all know how important about showing your amenities are to the public. So we've made that very transparent as you drive down the entry drive, looking into the pool area through the glass enclosure. And then we have one more public as amenity as well. It's the pavilion right at the Olive Grove right there. Apologize for that. And we'll get to that as well later. So there's a lot of little hidden experiences in this project but we think they all come together very cohesively. Casey?
Yeah, hi. This is Casey with BKF. Thank you, Mark. So right here we are seeing the improvements that we're proposing to do along Center Street. As you all know, the existing Center Street only has a sidewalk along our project frontage. And so we're proposing to not only widen the sidewalk along our frontage but we're also going to connect it all the way across the Zenpen frontage to El Camino Real. As part of doing that, the Center Street width will be decreased and so with the decreased width along Zenpen. As well as the bulb out improvements at the Center Street and San Anselmo intersection will provide a slower traffic in this area. So with the widened sidewalks, the bulb outs that provide pedestrian refuge, it's better travel and access for bicyclists and pedestrians. To get to any of the bike paths across the train tracks as well as all the way to El Camino. And as well as that, we're also turning the street Center Street into a class three bike lane with signage and charros. And as Andy's mentioned before, we're also removing the overhead lines in front so the wide sidewalk doesn't have all of the poles that are existing right now.
I this is Fred with KTGY Architecture and Planning. This is kind of our first look at this kind of mood board, this highly amenitized resort style. Community that we're talking about constructing here. I'm going to touch on some of the inspiration that we see here. So we we all look take a look at the Old El Rancho Hotel. And it's this kind of funky mission style hotel and our thought was wouldn't it be great to do some sort of contemporary. Version of of missions tile. So you'll note some of the smooth stucco, you had some of the exposed wood for shading structures. You'll notice decorative tiles at important areas. Courtyards surrounding a water feature and um let me hand it back to Mark that he can talk about some of the amenities that we're planning for the for the future development.
Yeah, thank you, Fred. So not only we have the enhanced entry drive, we takes you up to a drop off point in front of the lobby. The on top of the lobby is a rooftop terrace that views out towards that entry drive and views out towards the pool as well. We have the pool courtyard and I'd like to mention the structure of the plan. We've been talking about this contemporary mission style but. All the the way it's set up is for the courtyards. These courtyards have the climate control, they're protected from the wind. And they really create more of an outdoor room than a big space. So we have three, three courtyards. We have the fitness lawn off the fitness building. We have the pool courtyard and then we have the social courtyard which this demographic we all know enjoys doing off of the rooftop terrace. And then we have the activated fire lane around the back as well. Fred?
My apologies. I I was muted there. I apologize. If you look across the top of the slide, those first three images are sort of our source of inspiration and again this this. Mission inspired motel and then on the bottom of the screen you can see the the amenity hub with that modern mission style. Some of these mission characters that we're talking about this courtyard or villa style surrounded by a water feature. Smooth stucco in natural tones. Overhangs and shading. Thank you. Thank you, Garrett. On this slide you'll see some of the actual materials we're proposing. Exposed exposed wood decorative tile, smooth stucco in in naturally tinted tones as would be done in a traditional mission project.
Yeah, thank you, Fred. I'll take this one, Fred, because I'm really excited about this. This is one of the public benefits that we're most excited about along the Center Street. Is this sort of fountain pavilion area right here. We really see, you know, food trucks. They don't, you know, they're not going to compete with the hotel. It's just another dining option. This, once again, this demographic really enjoys the food trucks that come up on a Friday happy hour. You can sit there and eat with your friends. You can, it could be a ride share pickup spot. But this is an area outside. It's not secured. It's outside the project gates and anybody could use this space and we're really excited about it. And it was really, you know, we appreciate the staff pushing us in this direction. We were looking for inspiration for the Old El Rancho Fountain and we think a fountain plaza which is very mission style inspired as well. Here's the transparency of the pool courtyard with a glass enclosure. This is when you're pulling into the drop off area. You know, people like to see people with similar activities. So it's it's an awesome experience. And activation is one of the things we don't like it when the lobby lights go off at six o'clock. You want to see activation. So seeing that rooftop terrace on top of the lobby in the evening is a great experience.
Right. I'm sorry. And Mark, I just wanted to point out that you'll see that amenity hub at the end of the formal entry drive and off to your left is the the Center Street facade.
Yeah. Once again, working with staff, we really did a great job, I think, together with staff on this Center Street activation. We widen what typically would be a five foot sidewalk in Millbrae. We widen it to eight foot wide as. They they mentioned earlier, we brought the trees closer to the street to create better walking driving experience. We provided. Site furniture for people to sit and enjoy sitting or waiting for a friend along the street. There's still parking along Center Street. And we've also provided for a bike chero as well. And then you can see on the far right of that section the terrace gardens. And then those that's a private patio for the ground floor residential unit. So they're up about seven feet or so from the street. But we still have that, you know, eyes on the street that everyone's looking for. And here's the plan view. We have a nice pavilion feature at the very entry right there. You know, we're screening the utilities behind that and then we have at the bulb out where Casey mentioned to slow traffic down. We have another respite area right there. And then the last place is at the bike kitchen where your friends could meet you and take off and go to the bar and Caltrain station.
So the here's a view of the of the new Center Street which is kind of the new front door face to the community. And you'll know it's it's a fairly long facade so you notice that it and it does have a significant grade change. So there's a break midway down and that's kind of at the intersection of San Anselmo. That is a secondary entrance and you'll notice these terrace gardens and that's kind of the way that we mitigated this grade change. Also because of the length of the side, we we have two different architectures to give it a little more visual interest as you as you move down along the street.
And here's here's that last section before we get to the railroad tracks. You got the garage entry for the residents. You have the EVA lane. That's where the fire trucks would go in in the event of emergency. And then we've also, as Casey mentioned, we're extending the sidewalk all the way to the train tracks as well.
Thanks, Mark. Out of a view from from the Center Street and that's that bike kitchen and again you'll see the decorative tile marking that entry and these meeting notes that we've created to interact with the community. And lastly, um, this is the facade that faces the railroad tracks and we do intend and we have been, we've heard the staff and we do have planned to do some in art installation for the Marina Vista community as well as passengers by on the train.
Thank you, Mark, Fred and Casey. Just some real quick points of sustainability. I mean, this is always big on everyone's mind nowadays. You know, the project is will be very sustainable. I mentioned earlier the transit oriented nature, the development. Repurposing of a large surface parking lot. We're going to have electrical vehicle charging stalls, planting a bunch of new trees. We're going to install a recycled water irrigation system. So when when that makes its way on through the city's lines to our site, we'll be able to connect right into that. Of course, all the plumbing fixtures will be the latest and greatest as far as wire conserving. And the the building envelopes will be insulated and and conformed to the highest standards of tile 24. And the, the building envelopes will be insulated and, and conform to the highest standards of tile 24. I want to wrap this up pretty quickly, make sure we have plenty of time for questions. Real quick, want to point out, you know, we do have an EVA that goes around the site for fire engine access, emergency vehicle access. But we do purpose that. And so it's not a pavement road that goes around. It's going to be a dog park that goes around. And that's something we're very excited about, as you can see here on the screen. And showing here are some of the water quality treatment areas. Everyone knows about stormwater quality these days. And so the blue squares on the screen are the different treatment areas that will be treating that water before it leaves the site. Garrett, I think, you know, we can touch on this stuff, but I think at this point, I'd like to kind of wrap up our presentation. It's 6:20. I want to make sure we give everyone time to ask any questions that, that anybody might have. So again, thank you very much for your time tonight, especially during these, these trying times, the pandemic, the fires and the unrest. As City Council members, I'm sure you're very, very busy. So we thank you for your time.
Ask questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Davidson. Let's go to comments, questions from the council. And if we can please keep these brief. We would also like to do a public comment at some point. If we have additional time at the end, we can come back to council in case we missed anything.
I prefer to hear what the public has to say. Allow them some time to speak.
Let's do one round of council questions and comments first to begin. Let's go to Councilwoman Oliva.
That's I know her.
Thank you very much. I, I, I think that I could be very, very comfortable with the project. It's almost like if you think about that beautiful car that you want. And now how do you afford it? Because it fits every need that you have. It's unfortunate that we can't afford this project in our city. And I, I am very grateful to have this developer in front of us. And I think that he's really touched on a lot of the concerns and the needs of our community. And I want to go forward. I heard tonight pretty loud and clear, and I'd like to be assured that there will be a hotel so that we can, we can recover our costs at the million dollars that we will have as a deficit to our, to our community every year. And I think the bottom line comes down to the impact fees. I mean, we're looking at 18 million that if, in fact, this project was before us today, that we would have not have a dispute or disagreement that would go into our general fund to provide us what we really need in our community and in our city.
Excuse me. Can members of the public please mute themselves at the moment? Thank you.
So when we talk about this 18 million and we talk about a dispute or an argument, I would hate to see any of us go that way. That'll be a complete and total waste of money on both ends and a project that is not going to happen in three years and facilitate the needs that we really have and hopefully be flourished even in three years. So I would hope that we can conclude and negotiate at least halfway with that. I mean, I appreciate the Center Street improvement of the, and the 1.2 offer for the, the time missed in the hotel. But if the developer could come in and maybe look at fulfilling a, a large chunk or at least meet us halfway in that, put it at 16 now million deficit that we had foreseen in this project. I think that, that we can make a deal. I can't imagine that our community couldn't profit from this and have a, make it beautiful and thrive and everybody do, be lucrative for, for everybody. And I know there's a way to do that probably with the parks and open space area. And I'm hoping we can, I'm really, I'm knowing, I know we can work this out. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliva. Let's go to Councilman Pappen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For clarification, and the public's listening here, we only have the residential before us. Is that correct?
Correct. There is no hotel.
Okay, so kind of, I'm not appreciating kind of smoke and mirrors with a hotel that is not before us presently. It looks great. We like the, OLS has been a wonderful partner, fantastic. But Millbrae requires that this be a total proposal here, which the city manager has explained. The recurring operational costs will cost city residents. How much money a year? Can I get clarification on that?
Right around a million, a million dollars a year. If we round that, if we round up on Anton's fiscal analysis and round down on ours, the average is a million dollars a year.
Which we do not have. And the offered, what the developer's proposing is a one-time payment of like a million dollars. So let's be clear here, because I don't want the public to be misrepresented that, oh my God, they offered this money in the end. And then years later, we have to keep paying for the operational costs of lease and fire and everything else. So is it, can the developer please answer for me? Have you sat down with our staff to accommodate the requested alternatives that the staff has proposed?
I thank you for your question. We've been talking with staff quite a bit. I'm not quite sure I know what alternatives you're speaking about right now.
Well, yeah, it was explained that there's certain legislation you feel that you are exempt from, which is the basis of our fees. The alternative is our general plan requires you to provide certain park facilities here or in lieu of that. All the wonderful amenities you propose there, correct me if I'm wrong, but they are not open to the public.
So the amenities inside of the property will not be open to the public, but the amenities on Center Street and everything will be. I don't, I don't think that, that park, except we saw earlier today, applies to multifamily. I think that's for subdivisions. I have to double check on that.
So, and I'm a little unclear here. You're leasing the land. So it's not, I, I, I don't understand the difference if you are owning the land, what the impact is on the city. Can somebody clear that up for me?
Yeah, well, the fiscal impact, this is Tom Lee's, if I may, the fiscal impact is that the basis for the assessed valuation remains whatever the book value is today. So probably 1976 assessed valuation, because it's not a sale. And as a sale, it does not get reassessed to today's market value. And so the tax bases or possessory interest tax that they would pay is circa 1976 assessed valuation. Now, what will happen is the improvement value, which we analyzed, which it would be the, the cost attributed or the increase in value contributed to just the construction is something that would then be assessed. So that's where we recalculated. I think the developer agrees right around that $489 per capita. But, but as long as I have the microphone, I might also just let the council know that even the developer shows the, some of the capital improvements, I think Andy said, for future reclaimed water. The problem is that they are not contributing to our, the fair share for our reclaimed water program and retrofit in our sewer treatment plant. So we appreciate the fact that they're doing that onsite, but they have no contribution to paying their fair share for that. Nor, as I think one of the architects or maybe Andy showed, the regional circulation of the bike trails between their site and, and the BART station. They are not contributing to any of those offsite improvements as of right now. And that's the issue that we have. Look, we, we like the architecture. We do have a little bit of concern on the photos that they showed versus what they're actually building. But as they say, the devil's in the details. This is, this is an issue for us as a city. We want to work with Andy and Anton on coming a, you know, having a compromise on the fiscal impact. So sorry, that's more than your question, but I wanted, as long as I have the mic.
No, and I just want to be clear here that we are reviewing this for the purpose of, we have to protect the city of Millbrae here. Our residents can't afford to pick up the slack if this developer is refusing to pay the fees under new laws. I think there's another piece of legislation kind of revamping Prop 13 right now that I don't know how that would come into play here too. So you got either you refusing to pay the fees or you've got the park assessment. So I appreciate it. I would love staff to, I'd love the developer to sit down with staff here, get us the assurance of the hotel. We're not going to piecemeal this. Piecemealing doesn't work here. Put everything together so we can protect the city of Millbrae from just paying the fair share that the developer should be paying for. So I mean, that's, those are the issues I see here. It looks really nice, lovely, you've got a nice hotel, all that stuff. But we're not guaranteed any of that. And we are not, I, I can't tell my residents here, we're going to pick up the slack, a million dollars a year thereafter for the police, fire, and everything else. So I'm hoping that the developer will work this out with the city because that's just not reasonable. So those are my questions, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilwoman Pappen. Let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Question first. Clearly, we've only got 27 minutes before our council meeting. We're going to have to have another study session so that we can dive into details. Will that be arranged relatively soon? Can it be arranged relatively soon?
Again, this is Tom Lee. We're limited now by state law to only five meetings. And this is the second meeting of those five meetings.
Okay, then it's really tough that, I'm sorry, Tom.
Off tonight if we can.
Yeah, and you could, you could also submit some of the questions offline if, you know, we're getting really deep into the details here. But let's try to keep it fairly brief tonight.
Hopefully you know me that I have a number of questions that are very detailed, but I'll try to go to the big picture ones. First of all, I did go by City Hall today and I picked up all of your plans that Anton provided us. I don't know if the other elected's got a chance to do that. So I've been looking through them and there's some lovely pictures in here and lovely arches. And unlike a planning commissioner who said Spanish is dead, I think Spanish is very much alive. And yet the buildings themselves don't have the arches in there. So we can talk about that later. But there's some lovely work in here. I have a question because to me, it seems like the only thing we're going to get to tonight are the developer fees. One question though, of the 5% or 19 units that are low, low affordable, are those all the studios at 500 square feet?
No, no, those are mixed with the same ratio. They're all throughout all the different unit sizes.
Okay, so there could be a couple or an individual or a family of four who would qualify for the low, low income.
Right.
Okay, and all of them have balconies. So none, no one's being treated differently.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, here's my question. I looked at, and I have a couple of questions I'll ask you online, offline. But the proposed impact fees are $47,338. I don't know what you think your starting price will be for the market rate units. But let's just say, well, I use 5,000 because that's a three-bedroom down in Mountain View. Your return on investment is in 10 months. What is so difficult about paying the developer fees?
So I think pre-pandemic, maybe that was the case. Post-pandemic, things have changed.
I'm sorry, in Mountain View, the rents are going up. In the Bay Area, the rents are still going up. And I've checked that.
Okay. Appreciate that remark. We've got several projects where that's actually not the case. So again, what of the, of the fee, the 47,000 or whatever it is, I think only like 2,100 goes to services. Is that correct? And the rest goes to kind of parkland and parkland acquisition. And so, you know, going back to the 1.2 million dollars we offered, if you take 2,800, $2,900 times 38, 384 units, you're right around 1.1 million. We've offered 1.2, which is again, in good faith. So we are, I feel. Step you know.
Mayor, I have lots of questions specifically. I don't know if Anton has read high-speed rails plans or plans to comment by the five o'clock deadline tomorrow. They plan on running 18 trains every hour. And I strongly encourage whatever happens along the parking garage. I want your project here. I want the housing units. I don't like losing the restaurant. Because what we haven't accounted for is the fact that that restaurant and the underground bar and the swimming pool is a piece of Millbrae's history. It is where Hollywood stayed, as you know, because we talked about this. My grandfather stayed there as a cameraman for Universal Studios. It is part of our soul that you are taking. And it's also where all of our high-class reunions have their dinners there. You're taking what is a very public space and making it a private space. And that is a loss beyond the 108 jobs and beyond the TOT. That's something that hasn't been accounted for yet. So I guess I just want more. But please look along the, the train. It's going to get very, very noisy. And anything that you do along that side has to work on sound absorption and not sound bouncing. And to give something for Marina Vista to look at, and you need to be aware with that many trains, if there's an accident or a disaster, that road, Center Street, is the only way to evacuate Marina Vista neighborhood. That's it. It's the only car-access road. And I think you need to be considering that in your plans. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make my comments brief so that we can have audience participation. I just, just want to say the design, I appreciate your design. Unfortunately, you have two other projects in Millbrae with the same architectural treatment. You might want to do something to give it some more uniqueness. Third, even though we know that you, you are, you're intending to build a hotel, things happen. In case of San Bruno, they all intended to build a hotel. It fell through and we don't want to have the same sort of experience. So we really have to have some sort of more concrete assurance that that hotel will be built. I know you have my time to do, to the public.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman Lee. Yeah, I think a lot of what I was planning to say has been said. Obviously, the, the elephant in the room here is the hotel not being part of the same development application. I think we would all feel much more comfortable about this if it were included as part of the same development application. And we've done it before. We did that with the Gateway TOD2 project that included a hotel and performance measures for guaranteeing construction of the hotel concurrently with the residential and office uses. So it definitely can be done. It has been done here in Millbrae. And it's been very successful so far. You know, I agree that the architecture, I think, looks, I personally have been pretty impressed by the architecture that has been submitted. Also, the attempts to incorporate elements of the El Rancho, some of the Mission-style architecture and the, the room, the bar in the conceptual hotel. I think a little bit more could be done, perhaps, you know, instead of Anton Millbrae, have a, you know, Anton El Rancho Millbrae or Anton El Rancho, something like that, to kind of keep the legacy alive. But I think, you know, that we do have, I think, a path forward for, that could be a win for the city. And I think there's, you know, certainly a great need for, for the housing here, but the development has to be able to pay for itself. I also think the, the affordable component is pretty minimal, only 5%. I know that's at the very low-income category, but my own personal preferences for more BMR units, even if they're not necessarily at the lowest affordability level. I know we also have a significant need for moderate income units. I think we are pretty good on low-income units. So maybe if some combination of very low and moderate could be used to bump up a number of BMR units, I think that would be great. But typically, you know, for the TOD1 and TOD2, we required at least 15% affordable units on those projects. So thank you very much. We look forward to seeing more of this. And at this point, I think we will go to public comment. So if there's any members of the public, please, that would like to comment on this. So if there's any members of the public, please, that would like to comment on this, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom. Anybody who's watching on TV can phone in. The phone-in instructions are available on the agenda posted on the city's website. Okay, so if there are any members of the public who would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature in Zoom right now.
Where's the raised hand?
My hand's right here. Unmute me.
Okay, yes, Ronald Bell?
Yeah, am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted. You have three minutes, please.
Okay, we own 1180 El Camino, which is Zen Peninsula. We own that property. My name is Deborah Bell. This is my brother Tom Bocci and my husband Ronald Bell. I just have some questions. I'll read everything and then you can let me know. One, have there been any variances from the city of Millbrae to 1180 El Camino since this began? Have there been any environmental ERA reports done for known problems so that we can see a copy of it? Has there been a study about the impact of the possibility of problems of parking on Central Street? Our property, Center Street, our property line, I'm concerned about because of the distance from the neighboring thing. I see it's a driveway. I'm also concerned about the trees and the foliage coming and dropping on our property. I'm concerned about drainage from their property to our property. I'm wondering if they're planning on putting up a retaining wall if there is going to be a drainage problem, French drains, whatever. And then, you know, just the fact that who will be responsible during all this construction to cleaning the dirt, the dust, the general construction debris that may come onto our property during this construction? Center Street, I understand you're doing a, you know, sidewalk. Who's paying for the sidewalk that's going to go in front of our property?
Which is our property.
Which is, yeah, it's our property. Anyway, and I would like a copy of all the points that were made today. I tried to take pictures of it. I tried to print it. My thing didn't do. So is it a gated community? So it is not open to the public? That's it. Those are all my questions. So do you have any answers in this one minute?
Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Bell. Maybe if we can finish up the public comments and then the applicant can respond to those questions. Just to make sure that we have enough time for everybody. Let's go to Chris.
Mayor, staff is prepared to answer some of those questions as well.
Okay, go ahead. Feel free to answer. Okay, let's go to let's go to Chris, next public comment.
All right, can you guys hear me? All right, I'm a land name resident adjacent to the project. Couple of questions is I see the center lane has a lot of amenities, but of course, as we know, Bart is our last stop. I know Annie Oliva is the head of the homeless project. I don't know what's going on with that, but we are getting inundated with homelessness. So there is a lot of spaces where they can camp out and stay on. Secondly, as I said, I don't know how it's gonna, it's a nice project, but for our neighborhood, our PG&E lines also run into their lines. So I don't know if that's going to be included of the underground since we're right adjacent to them. I don't know how that's going to connect. And thirdly is, do they have security 24/7 to take care of the homeless? And if amenities can be possibly open to, if it's going to benefit us, maybe open to the residents adjacent to them would be nice. That would be it. Oh, one more thing is Center is the main endpoint into our neighborhood as well. If they had another inlet into their garage would be great because as it is, is already inundated with parking and our things and being on the first floor, what would stop them from parking onto Center to enter into their apartment? Finished.
Thank you very much, Mr. Groza. Let's go to Isaac, and if you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, yes, my name is Isaac. I'm actually a resident in Marina Vista. I think I have a similar question of like what Chris just asked. Center Street is the only outlet from Marina Vista. So my understanding is that the parking garage had about 500 parking space. So I'm worried about the traffic flow. At one time, like during the the commute hour, the rush hour, will that be a lot of congestion at some point of time? So this will be hard for for the resident in Marina Vista to go out to El Camino real. Yeah, I think that that's my one of my main concern about the traffic because the garage entrance is, this is the only one garage entrance on Center Street that go in and out to the Center Street. So let's say only 10% of the car from the parking garage that come in and out, there's already like 50 cars. So that will be that will be a lot of traffic on Center Street. Yeah, that's not my question. Thank you.
And Isaac, can you please provide your last name for the record?
My last name is Lo. L-O.
Isaac Lo. Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, seeing no other comments, public comment is now closed. If the applicant could please respond to the questions from the public, starting with the questions from the bells. Absolutely. Thank you. I thank you, everybody, for the questions. First question about the sidewalk, I mean, obviously, we're going to be doing those improvements, so we'll be the ones paying for that. Well, we are going to be your neighbors. We're going to be your neighbors for a long time. We'd love to sit down with you and talk about the construction of the project. Myself and Garrett will both be available to do that at any time you'd like. And we will, we, as I mentioned earlier in this meeting, we're the we're an in-house general contractor. So we will be directly controlling construction and working with all of the neighbors. The property will be gated. It's not gated directly on the street as Mark was showing you. The cars kind of drive in. But at the buildings, the buildings provide really the fencing. That's kind of this style of architecture. So the buildings provide the security themselves, but there won't be open access through, if that answers your question. Let's see, we, you know, and then, of course, you know, we're going to be making sure that we're cleaning up all the construction debris every single day. There's strict state laws that don't allow for dust to be passed on to your project and dirt to go down the street. And so, you know, one of the things we pride ourselves in in construction is making sure that we're not just compliant with that, but we've become a poster child of the right thing to do. And so that's something we take very seriously and we're proud of. I hope, I think I got grabbed all those questions. We will have security on site. We'll have security on site during construction. We'll have security on site once once the project is built and occupied with residents. Those utility lines will be, we will be putting them underground. And so the way that works is we coordinate with PG&E and whatever other utility providers are on those lines. And they kind of tell us what pole they want us to connect to so there's no disruption in local service. And that's something that we'll be coordinating with PG&E. We really kind of let them take the lead on that. And what stops parking on Center Street? Well, under our rules and therefore the lease, our tenants are not going to be allowed to park on Center Street. We've provided ample parking in the parking structure. They shouldn't need to park on Center Street, and they definitely will be breaking the rules if they do, which we will be enforcing, again, with our security. As far as the traffic going down Center Street, we appreciate and understand that concern. We have been working hard with staff and outside consultants to make sure that traffic is not an impact, which is part of the environmental document that's being worked on right now. I believe and I hope I touched on all of the questions that were asked.
Mr. Mayor, Tommy, if I can just add that a little bit, I think the public needs to know that state law has changed recently. It's a very heavy-handed stick approach on local municipalities. A little bit of, we touched a little bit on the discussion tonight. I think it bears a more detail of Anton's commitment to step up and at least mitigate the impacts that we have identified to them, I think, as a good community partner, as they so state. I think that's extremely important, and we have offered alternatives to the developer to do that. Hopefully, after tonight's meeting, we'll be able to discuss that in a little bit more detail and reach a compromise. I think in terms of some of the environmental mitigation that the owner of the adjacent property was asking, because of new state law changes, no longer does the CECL process allow for mitigation of level of service, you know, A, B, C, D, you know, F, etc. It's based on total vehicle miles traveled, and the objective under the law is to reduce carbon emissions rather than reduce local traffic impacts at intersections and congestion on city streets. So unfortunately, our hands are tied with new legislation and state law that our state legislators have adopted. But hopefully, with the caliber of developer that Anton is, we can sit down and work a compromise that's something that's feasible for them, something that's feasible for the city. Because certainly, the way the project is now and where we have been in previous discussions with the developer, it just it just isn't isn't going to work, even though they do have some state law on their side. We believe that we also have the intention of state law that we don't necessarily think that everything they say is intended by state law. But we don't want to go there. We'd rather work with Andy and the team, you know, to get a commitment on a feasible project for both them and the city. So hopefully, Andy will agree to that. We can move forward in a positive manner.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Williams. We have just a few more minutes left, so maybe final comments from the council. Let's start with Councilman Oliva, and please keep these brief.
Sure, I'm just, I'm hoping that you guys could get to the table, too, with staff and Anton's project. I think it would be very, very good for our community as long as we can be sustainable. I just, I didn't get Chris's last name with regard to the homelessness, and I'd like to follow through on that if somebody could help me out with that. And I don't think that that's going to be an issue of the project, but it is an issue of the day. And I'm just thinking out loud here for the Bocis that we're talking with Zen Peninsula. The project does not have a restaurant. So hopefully, the neighbors can work well together, and that could be the actual hotel go-to restaurant for everybody to have a win situation here. Please, guys, get to the table. Staff, Anton, and developers, we can make this happen, and it could be really, really, really great for our community.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilwoman Oliva. Let's go to Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm hoping we can pull away the smoke and mirrors kind of what was presented tonight and really come to the table there. My question would be, we are trying to be sustainable. We're trying to protect our city and our residents. So when you have your access coming in through that one street, how much street parking is going to be lost? And in addition to that, we are hearing stories that high-speed rail is going to have a 40-foot sound wall. I don't know, you know, I love the fact you're going to be doing art and things like that, but there are a lot of different complications being proposed here. So we, as a council, are trying to protect the city. We appreciate your project. We appreciate the housing. We have to have the commercial balance as well, and I'm hoping we can work this out so that our residents are not picking up the tab from year after year. Thank you very much. Oh, and one other thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, there seems to be a question. The designs that were proposed tonight don't necessarily match what is been submitted to the city. So I personally find that disturbing. So if you're going to present designs to us, we need to see exactly what's been proposed to the city, and I don't know where we are on that. So please, let's get accurate representations moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So make sure that is ironed out before the next hearing. Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Really quickly and just quick responses. I don't see any school district people here. The school district is also proposing or has completed new fees. City, it might be good for us to reach out to the school district. I know that we received letters from people concerned about overcrowding at Lamita Park School, and the school district is planning on rebuilding that school. It's very small, and it is just down the street. My other question, you've talked about unbundled parking, which is a good way to bring down the cost of rent. If you've got unbundled parking, do you really need that many parking places? And so I'd like to see staff come back with more of a discussion of unbundled parking. If Anton has done that in other properties, how well has it worked? I have a hard time accepting this as a TOD project because you're supposed to be 0.9 miles from the station. And I believe 0.9 miles is at the old Orchard Supply Store when I walked it out years ago. So just give us some more information about that. And then to Councilwoman Oliva's point, the active hotel, I believe, does have a restaurant. At least, we talked about it in our ex parte communication. I like hotels with room service, especially if I've gotten in on a late flight. So please correct the assumption out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Schneider.
But again, Mr. Mayor, just so the public realizes, there is no hotel application, so I don't want anybody to think that.
Understood. But if, when they come back to us with a hotel, it's a full-service hotel.
Well, thank you very much for those comments. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, a lot has been said tonight, and I hope, Mr. Davidson, you and your team, take these comments to heart. And, you know, when this comes back to us or back to the planning commission, you know, we would like to see that hotel as part of the application. It's really, I think, the linchpin to this project for the city. So with that, I think we will adjourn, and we will be back, well, just in a couple of minutes for our regular 7:00 PM council meeting. So thank you very much, Mr. Davidson, for everyone who presented this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are we using the same Zoom?
I think we're using the same Zoom.
Yes, we are.
Very good. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
Hey, Matthew, I noticed that we're still streaming.
All right, are we ready to go? Got everyone here? Got the full council here? Got the full council here?
Roll call, Hotel.
One's ready?
Ready.
Okay. All right, MCTV, are you ready?
I could see that we're still streaming on YouTube, so.
Okay, let's just get going then. Okay, just give me one minute.
Is that a constituent about the dog park?
That's a happy constituent.
Guess who's house? Never a dull moment in the Oliva house.
Like your flag, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. It's kind of stiff. I couldn't get it to move.
Because we clearly needed more wind in Millbrae the last three days.
Well, at least it wasn't smoky.
Oh, where have you been all day?
You must live in a special part of Millbrae.
I paid my taxes.
Wayne, it was terrible.
No, I mean, smoky out there, but it's not down to ground level.
It's not like it was during the Paradise Fire. I will grant you that, but this yellow color all day long has been really weird.
I was down, it was ash, it was ash all over my car.
Yeah, I drove to LA and back last weekend, and it was like so scary. I think Ruben did the same route this weekend, too.
Yeah, there was a fire on going the opposite direction. Oh, my God, backed up traffic for 10, 20 miles.
You guys get to leave the house?
I had to go. I went to LA and back to see my son for lunch.
Oh, wow, that's really.
Same day.
That's a dedicated mother right there.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I just needed to do a surprise hello.
She has a nice car to take down there, though. At least it's a nice drive.
No, it used to hard drive still.
I did that many times in college. Now it's only when I have to.
Annie, maybe I should have your little friend over here during the meetings.
Why, you gonna suffocate him?
No! My raccoons don't come out till later.
We have the coyotes, the raccoons, the foxes. I'll turn it off as soon as we start. At least you can see my face now.
Little bit.
Bobby Miller lives next door to me, and he came over the other day, and he says, "Holy criminy, they're living in my shed."
The raccoons.
And I go, "Come on, Bobby, we gotta, I mean, we gotta do something about this." Yeah, because they come out, and right next to his shed is my garbage can. So they come out to dinner to my house, and then.
Stuff, though.
And then they go back to his.
Yeah, they're enjoying some of my fruit trees, too.
Yeah, sorry about that. I had a connection issue. I got disconnected for a moment, but I'm back. All right, so ready to begin? Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the September 8, 2020, meeting of the Millbrae City Council. And we have a roll call.
Councilmember Lee.
COVIDing at home.
Councilmember Pappen.
Zooming here.
Councilmember Oliva.
Dead giveaway with the dogs. I'm here.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Mayor Holliver.
Present.
Thank you. All council members are present.
Okay, thank you very much. Will you all please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We have four ceremonial proclamations this evening. We have a proclamation proclaiming September 11, 2020, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. We have a proclamation recognizing Labor Day, which was yesterday, September 7, 2020. We have a proclamation proclaiming September 21 to 27 of 2020 as National Pollution Prevention Week. And we also have a proclamation proclaiming the month of September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. If any members of the council would have any comments on any of those items, please raise your hand. Oh, Vice Mayor Schneider.
Just one question on national, or on 9/11, when I read the proclamation, and it talks about Day of Service. I know it's too late for this year, plus with COVID, it's awkward. But perhaps in the future, we can add in a Day of Service for that day. I have been communicating with a couple of members of the public about us getting better prepared for fire season. So I think that there's a number of activities we can do as a group, community service, and helps Millbrae become more resilient. Love to see it happen this year, but I don't think so, but next year. I just never noticed it was a Day of Service that President Obama declared.
Thank you very much. All right, that's a good idea. Okay, now let's go to the agenda overview and staffing. Mr. Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you again and members of the City Council. So after the ceremonial presentations, we do have our calendar of events that's attached to the council packet reports of bills and claims, and then a report out of the closed session of July 28, 2020. I will just mention that there is no reportable action from that closed session. Then approval of the meeting minutes for the City Council meeting of June 23, 2020. After approval of the meeting minutes, then it's oral reports for the City Committee members and commission members. There are no reports this evening. Then public communication. That's, any member of the public can address the City Council on for three minutes on any item not on the agenda. Then we move into the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar this evening. Item number five is approval of amendment for the law enforcement agreement with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. Item number six is consider resolution approving a professional services agreement with Jarvis Fay and Gibson for legal services related to the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan and High-Speed Rail Environmental Impact Report and other projects. This is due to a conflict of interest that Hansa Bridget has. So Jarvis Fay will help us with legal consultation when there's conflict. Consent calendar, item number seven is a resolution accepting the de-watering building repair project as complete and authorizing the city to file the notice of completion. Item number eight is to consider adoption of a resolution approving the supplemental of an application for the per capita grant funds to be used for the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Match. There are no public carings this evening. Under existing business, item number nine, consideration to adopt a resolution continuing the declaration of a local emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Moving to new business, item number 10 is to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the 2020 League of California Cities Annual Conference. That was scheduled to be in Long Beach, but it will be all online via Zoom this year. Item number 11, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Bartle Wells Associates for water and sewer utility rate study in the amount not to exceed. So that exceeds the 59,500, so not to exceed 59,500. Mr. Mayor, we would recommend that we continue this item this evening in discussions with you and engineering staff. We would like to add an analysis of our storm drain fees to this study. So we'd like to continue this item to September 22 for two weeks. I have Bartle Wells submit an amendment to their proposal to include that fee study. Item number 12 is a study session to receive input on the amendments to the 2016 Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan. This is to consider replacement of images that are projected in the in the plan with images that more fit the character of the city of Millbrae. Then lastly, we move into council comments and then adjournment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. Okay, with that, let's go to the approval of minutes. We have one meeting minutes, meeting minutes of one, minutes of one meeting, which is the regular meeting of June 23, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion for second.
Okay, sounds like we had a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Vice Mayor Schneider. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
The minutes of June 23 has been approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you. At this point, let's go to public communication. This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Speakers have up to three minutes. And if you are in the Zoom meeting, you can use the raised hand feature if you'd like to speak, if you are watching online or on TV or phoning in, you can phone in as well. The instructions are posted on the agenda on the city's website. Okay, so with that, let's start. The first speaker will be Paul DiMartini.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I was hoping to discuss this evening the agenda item eight, which is the Land Water Conservation Fund.
Oh, okay, let's hold off for a moment, and I'll get back to you in just a few minutes, okay?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next speaker then would be Ryan Motsek.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, like Paul, I would like to speak about item number eight. So I can just, I can just hold tight. It's okay.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'll get back to you in just a moment.
Yep.
Okay, seeing no other hands, oh, okay. Let's go to Yo-Yo Shway.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just wanted to speak on the continuing need for attention in our downtown. I think that it's pretty evident that Millbrae is missing out on quite a few opportunities when it comes to outdoor events, when it comes to outdoor dining, and also creating a more cohesive downtown during the pandemic to help support our merchants, especially restaurants. I'd like to encourage the council and city staff to look into extending what are currently temporary use permits for the right-of-way. This way, merchants that choose to invest what are very large sums of money, often over $10,000, into building outdoor dining patios can be assured that their investment will last beyond the December 31 expiration date of the permits that have currently been issued. Also, with the cancellation of Art and Wine this past weekend, we were reminded that how important it is to have outdoor opportunities. And we've seen other cities, such as Burning Game, who have enjoyed great success from having socially distant outdoor events where streets are closed and you know, the entire place is, the entire thing is billed as an event, and the community is encouraged to come out and spend money. And we are starting to, we're starting to see the end of summer. So obviously, I think if we are to do any outdoor events, now's the time to do it. And merchants are still very much suffering in the downtown. So I'd like to see just a little bit more attention to that and more assurances to business owners that more relief is coming from the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. All right, seeing no other hands raised, public comment is now closed. With that, we will go to the consent calendar. And I know there are a couple of speakers on item number eight. So let's take items five, six, and seven. Is there a motion? Okay, motion from? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Lee and a second from Councilwoman Oliva. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Pappen.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Mayor Holliver.
Aye.
Consent items five, six, and seven has passed unanimously.
Okay, let's go now to item number eight, and you will take the public comment. Let's start with Paul DiMartini.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Paul DiMartini. I'm a lifelong resident of Millbrae and frequent user of the skate park as well. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of key points that the original grants for the skate park project, when it was begun in 2006, were derived from the Land Water Conservation Fund. So when this comes up, and I hope that you vote in favor for it, it would seem logical to take these funds and then put them right back into the same area where it started for further development. I mean, I think the addition of a robust outdoor fitness pad, you know, really speaks to the spirit of the original park course that was put in place in the late '70s during that exercise phase for those of us that can remember back that far. And it'll continue to develop the area as a hub of recreation within the existing basketball courts and tennis courts that are already there. It'd be similar in concept, I think, to what you see in Foster City and San Mateo's Bearford Parks. They also have multi-use facilities. When you look at the skate park, it's pretty clear it's originally built in 2006. There's a need for renovation. Some of the elements there are made out of composite woods. They've seen a lot of use over the years from a lot of skateboarders, bikers, and scooter riders. And it really needs replacing, as well as the original layout is somewhat functionally obsolete, and we could improve safety over there. I know recently, there is a couple acts of graffiti, and the expensive trash can was vandalized. You know, I'm not sure that this type of mischief is just limited to skate parks and skateboarders. And it's, you know, it's a tough thing to deal with, but I think there's a way to abate it. And that's to activate the space, right? Activate it, don't vacate it. Stand behind it, make it more interesting, more enticing, more engaging for people that are doing fitness and exercise on the outdoor fitness pad and the guys that are in there in the park. And that's going to eliminate the guys that are looking for a quiet place to hide, to just kind of hang out and, you know, be up to no good. I think that's a good approach to handle that. I just want to say the other day, when I was out there with my five-year-old son, you know, a big smile came across my face. There is about 10 or 11 kids out there that were all, you know, young, not in their teens. Then there's a couple of other young adults enjoying it. There were passerbys stopping, taking a look, you know, at the park and all the action. And I just thought, what a joy this space brings to people. And to be able to enhance it would really be a win-win for everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. DiMartini. Let's now go to Ryan Motsek.
Hello, my name is Ryan Motsek. How are you doing?
Great.
All right, I am a Bay Area-born resident. I currently live in San Francisco, and I own and operate a business in downtown San Mateo, skate retail and online store called Atlas. I've been skating most of my life and was at the Millbrae Park on the grand opening date. When it was first built, I was very excited that there was such a robust park that was, you know, built when there wasn't really many parks like that available. Over the years, Over the years, I noticed that there hasn't been much upkeep and, you know, I think we're almost 20 years later. The park is, almost seems like it was rather forgotten about. There's general maintenance, but the wooden ramps are dilapidated. I think one of the large obstacles actually had to be removed from the park because of, it was an utter disrepair. And so I've been in touch with Mackenzie Brady, you know, I think for almost two years now, just going back and forth, attending meetings on what could be done to kind of revamp the park and like Paul said, you know, activate, not vacate it. And I think that now is the time for sure. I can tell you right now, I'm seeing more kids skateboarding. And actually, I'll take that back. I'm seeing more people skating now than ever. And it's a very inclusive activity. It's, we're seeing girls, we're seeing kids that are feeling comfortable in their skin that are, then we have trans kids that are starting to skate. And it's just a really, it's a real safe space for people to come together and feel a part of something, feel a part of the community. And I think like, again, what Paul said, if one kid or two kids are going to do something bad, I don't think that should have any sort of weight on what the entire skateboard community is. And I would highly, highly, highly push for you guys to move forward with the grant money to, to revamp this park and get it back to life and, and support the community. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Motsak. Okay. So no other, oh, looks like we have one more member of the public, Jake London.
Yeah, hey, how's it going, guys? So my name's Jake. I've been a lifelong user of the skate park for about 15 years now. And I'm also the Northern California Sales Rep for Santa Cruz Skateboarders, Skateboards. And basically, I mean, that skate park drove my whole life. It allowed me to learn how to work with people of all walks of life. And I've taught lessons and camps at that skate park. And I can't tell you the effect it has on the youth. I'm highly concerned about, you know, what, how the kids are affected by COVID. And I think any sort of positive physical activity that we can do to allow them to socialize with other kids safely distant, of course. And, you know, just build their confidence through an activity like skateboarding can be really helpful. And that, the Millbrae Skate Park allowed that for me, and I would like that to pass on to the next generation. And I think, as Paul said, activating the space and making it better will only make it a more positive space. And any help from you guys would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. London. Okay, let's see, Maureen Davis.
Hello?
Yes.
Am I here?
Yes.
Why is it not working?
We can hear you.
We can hear you, Maureen.
Maureen, we can hear you, what happened?
It's the double mute button, I bet.
Nobody can hear me?
No, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Maureen. You might have the sound turned off on your end, but.
Okay.
Okay, maybe, Maureen, if you can try to figure that out, we'll come back to you in a moment. Let's go to Andrew Concepcion. Andrew?
Yes. Awesome, yes, my name is Andrew Concepcion. I am also a lifelong frequenter of the Millbrae Skate Park. And I just wanted to voice my support for what all the other commenters have recently mentioned. That I do believe the skate park has been a very influential hub and just providing a strong community for many walks of life. Currently, there's a lot more younger girls that have been frequenting the skate park as well as other trans LGBTQ as a whole. And just generally viewed as outcasts to feel safe, to have camaraderie and a community to go to. And I think Millbrae Skate Park has been a great hub to provide that for everybody. And like Ryan had mentioned, it seems like the skate park as a whole has been quite neglected for the last decade plus. I think if there's any ability to rehabilitate it and like Paul had mentioned, activate it instead of neglecting it, it'd be a great use of funds as well as a great place for families, kids, youth, young adults, old adults alike to have a safe place to exercise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir Concepcion. Maureen, if you want to try one more time?
Give me a second, I'm going to try to get her.
Hi, this is Maureen.
No, we're probably.
Okay, all right. Ms. Davis, final try? Okay, all right, seeing no other public comments, public comment is now closed. Let's see, Councilwoman Papin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I greatly appreciate all the speakers tonight. Thank you so much for letting us know how you feel about the skate park. Many of us feel similarly. We need your help to reinvest in this community resource to really help maintain it so that we don't have the graffiti and the vandalism. Do we, question to staff, is there any sort of signage out there as to the cost or the penalties for that sort of vandalism?
Uh, councilman, there's a signage, but there is no signage that says what the cost of the penalty is. But we can look at adding that in terms of what the citation amount would be if anyone's caught analyzing. We, we, we do have cameras that do work, and so we were able to identify the people that have graffiti the skate park and have done some other damage. And, and I know that there's some chatter out there in the community that we closed the skate park, but it's more than just the graffiti. We spent a significant amount of money on, as council recalls, repairing the bathroom and other facilities. And, and so, you know, we're going to meet with everyone and we just can't continue to go out there and spend money when we've got, you know, potholes and everything else to fix. Not that the skate park and recreation's not a priority, but it's just such a fiscal impact that people don't take care of.
Well, thank you, Mr. Williams. I think this might be a prime opportunity for maybe some corporate sponsorship to help us out there. We are in dire financial need, but we do want to see community resources like that keep going. So we would love to talk to some of the people that presented their views tonight. Let's, let's try to keep this going. COVID's been really hard on all of us, but I fully agree that we need this type of community resource to keep the community engaged and also to keep things safe as far as social distancing and the masks at this point in time. So I would like to see this keep going, but I do understand too the impact on the city. So I'm, I'm hoping we can reach out and get some partnerships here. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably from Mackenzie Brady. There has been talk in the past of getting the skateboard park users to work with Culture Arts Advisory Committee on a mural project. I sent you an email earlier today, Mackenzie, or Ms. Brady, doesn't have to be discussed here. But with all of these great users at our council meeting, I'm thinking, Mr. DiMartini, if you're here in town, let's talk about taking some of those blank spaces and getting some artwork up there. It'll add to the park. It'll hopefully be fun for the kids and the adults involved. And then second, with at least one sales rep from Santa Cruz Skateboard and then the San Mateo Store, I hope that our economic development people heard that. And we have empty storefronts. And if we can enact that ordinance on those empty storefronts, maybe we can get a mixed skateboard, bicycle, roller skate business in here even, you know, and somehow would love to attract your businesses into town and to work with our skateboard park. Thank you all for coming tonight. I really appreciated hearing all of you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to suggest the same for, for Vice Mayor, piggyback on Vice Mayor Schneider, produce some sort of graffiti wall or something that maybe the Arts, the Arts Commission can support and give our kids an outlet to express their art. Thank you.
Mayor, can I add to that? I've got a collection of skateboard park murals. There's some out on coast side, sometimes it's just a wooden ramp, but there's some fun things that we can do and maybe that'll reduce the graffiti. I see, Mr. Martini, I don't think we can let you speak, but let's talk offline.
All right, thank you very much for all those comments. And I think also, you know, I'd like to see that be reopened. One issue that has been occurring at the skate park, just from my own observation, before it was closed, there was, it seemed to be very little social distancing and mask wearing going on over there. It seemed very crowded. So if that's also something that our staff can work with the user group on, making sure that we keep a limited capacity at, at the time, at least until we are through, through this current emergency. All right, so with that, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Sam, a second.
Okay, a second from Councilwoman Papin. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva.
I'll vote aye, but I did have my hand raised, Mayor.
Oh, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I didn't see your hand raised there.
I just lowered it when you called for the vote.
Go ahead.
I'm good, I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
All right, the resolution approving this middle of the application for the per capita grant funds to be used for the land and water conservation grant fund match passed unanimously.
And I apologize for that, Councilwoman Aliva, but if you'd like to make a comment.
No worries.
Go ahead, or maybe make it to staff offline.
I got it, no worries, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's go ahead now to item number nine. This is a existing business, adopting a resolution continuing the declaration of a local emergency in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Tom Williams, City Manager. Just a very quick presentation that the California Emergency Services Act does authorize cities to declare a local emergency, you know, as defined of extreme peril to persons' property, such as, such as this pandemic. On March 19th, 2020, the, the City Council of Millbrae did adopt Resolution 20-18 proclaiming a local state of emergency due to the Nobel coronavirus. The emergency declaration was pursuant to the California Emergency Services Act, all of our emergency organizational functions pursuant to Millbrae Municipal Code, Chapter 2.25, as well as the evidence that was provided in the city council based in its, in the declaration, as well as emergency declarations from the President of the United States, Governor of California, and the San Mateo County Public Health Official. So this item is simply just to continue the March 19th, 2020 Resolution 2018 because it has expired. There is no fiscal impact associated with renewing the emergency declaration. But by renewing the emergency declaration, it both grants the city manager additional authority to incur expenses needed for the protection of life and property and make the city eligible to receive increased financial assistance to address all of our efforts in combating and managing the COVID-19 crisis. I will note that we did receive about $240,000 from the state of California. That's the state, not the federal government's cares package. That allows us to, and qualify, we've already received the funding for the $100,000 that the grant that we provided to San Mateo Strong, as well as all the PPE equipment that we provided to the community, the couple of weekend days that we provided face masks to the community, as well as several cleanings of the Chiqui Room and city offices. So this is highly recommended that the council renew the emergency declaration of a local emergency pursuant to the California Emergency Services Act. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Williams. See, Councilwoman Aliva?
Yeah, I have one question. If, if we locally, the city of Millbrae is continuing the state of emergency, does the state mandate over us, is there a pecking order here? I'm just thinking of the energy crisis and everything that came into place with the state of emergency and how it could affect us locally that way. And I'm not looking to disagree with where we are now, but I, do we have an opportunity to not proceed if the state does?
Yeah, that is a great question. I think in some areas we do and some areas we don't. For example, and then our city attorney, Michael Conneron's on the phone and he could probably jump in here. But for example, some of the state mandated requirements of, you know, it has to do with tenant rights and rent payments, both residential and commercial. I believe that we do have to abide by those because it becomes a state mandate. Now, if we wanted to do more than what the governor legislates, then under the state of emergency, the city council could do more. But if you recall, we are just following the state of California's emergency declaration, both in terms of what the governor comes out with, as well as the length of time that that emergency declaration is, is current. So we're doing nothing more now than, than following the state of California. But if they wanted to do something more in-depth, then, then we would be afforded to do that. We just can't do anything less.
I just want to, I just want to be clear that I want to be a leader in all this.
All right, thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. A city manager, I actually was downtown and talked to a couple of restaurateurs who have done their parklets and they are concerned about having to take them down in December. And then reading over the weekend that it looks like Vladminia is forming out in the Pacific. I don't know if that means we're going to have as dry a winter as we had this year, but there's a good likelihood that those parklets and outdoor dining would work in January, February, March, whether or not we have a drier wet winter, and it provides that opportunity. So if not, I know you can't do anything now, but can you come back to us? Right now, those permits end on December 31st, 2020. Come back to us so that our merchants have a little bit more security or knowing what may happen come the new year.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do believe that the emergency declaration and the ordinance that the city council adopted, it actually goes through, I think, 60 days after the pandemic is declared, declared over.
Good. We might want to make that clear, because that's not what I heard from the, the two of the restaurants I spoke with.
Yeah, I will, I will double check that and make sure, but I do believe that it's 60 days after the pandemic is deemed clear.
And I brought you, or I brought Eliza the article today about how to make sure that our restaurants are doing everything so that they can then advertise that they're doing everything and we can keep business coming into downtown. I hope we'll move forward quickly on that.
Thank you very much for those comments. Okay, let's go to Councilman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah, I just want to thank staff for all the work on these last, it's been a critical time. This is a unique time, and I hopefully will never have to do this again. In fact, I really appreciate the mayor's guiding us through this difficult time, especially with downtown. And staff, I know that you have proposed to close off some streets to try to maximize usage, square foot usage and, and provide more opportunities for businesses with downtown, and they declined. But I'm encouraging to keep that door open. And hopefully that, I mean, I know that San Mateo's tried that, and, but Burlingame probably had the most success. And I'm not, I'm not particularly understanding what's. and, but Burlingame probably had the most success and I'm not, I'm not particularly understand what's the difference, but maybe we can learn a few things from Burlingame Avenue. Okay, and thanks again for staff.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Lee. Okay, so let's go to public comment on this. Seeing none, okay.
Move approval.
Public comment.
Mr. Mayor, if I can get up in here, I noticed that Councilmember Aliva does have her hand up.
Sorry, Councilwoman Aliva?
You acknowledged me. Thank you very much for noticing, but you did.
Sorry, I saw a public comment was up, but then it went away. So yes, Councilwoman Aliva?
Thank you. I made my point. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Would you, would you like to make the motion?
I would second yours. You moved it, so I'll second it.
Okay.
Aye.
Alright, we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappin and a second from Councilwoman Aliva. Can we have a roll call vote please?
Councilmember Lee?
I started already. Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
The resolution continued the declaration of a local emergency in response to COVID-19 pandemic passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, let's go on to item number 10. This is the designation of a voting delegate and up to two alternates for the 2020 League of California Cities Annual Conference. And I know the conference had been previously scheduled to be in Long Beach this year. It was canceled due to the pandemic and has been moved to a virtual format. I believe there are a couple of resolutions that will be coming before the voting assembly. Do we have a presentation or any comment from staff on this?
That was perfect, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly right. That the League of California Cities, you know, as the council knows, provides legislative advocacy, professional development and educational resources. The last day of the conference, which is, goes from Wednesday, October 7th to Friday, October 9th. The last day is the day that the voting delegates vote on resolutions from the League of Cities and we are simply, this item is to appoint a voting delegate and an alternate to represent the city. This is extremely important that all cities participate in the voting and the process.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if anyone had been interested, would be interested in participating or had been interested in attending. Go ahead. Yes, Councilwoman Pappin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as a council, will we have any idea what the resolutions are going to be? Question one. Question two, Mr. Mayor, will you be able to, I know you're working still full time, will you be able to be there for the voting?
I can be there for the voting, yes. So we have, there are, I believe, two resolutions and we have received them. I don't have them in front of me, but we can bring them up at the second September meeting for the council to review them before the League of Cities.
That would be great. With that said, and the council gets an opinion, I'd recommend Ms. Aliva and the mayor to be delegates if possible.
I believe there's one delegate and up to two alternates.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think the council knows this. It is one city, one vote, and so.
I have no objections. I'm gonna go 10 meetings, but you guys.
I was gonna ask, how do you attend the meeting?
Online.
There'll be.
Virtual format.
I'm not getting. You have to sign up or register or anything?
Yeah, you have to register. I think I'm already registered.
I think I'm registered too. It's just, the voting though, has to be specific. Not everybody.
I'd love to be an alternate.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, you're the.
Well, I think we have to take a vote and then I think we need a second alternate. Who wanted to be the second alternate?
I'll be happy to. I'll be there, but you know, I don't think you need a second alternate.
At least you don't have to run to the airport this time, which is where half the audience disappears, running to the airport.
If Vice Mayor Schneider wants to be the second.
No, you know what? I already attended a conference this summer online and between the phone continually ringing and the doorbell, I wish you all the best of luck.
Okay, I'll make the motion then. For the mayor, first alternate, Ms. Aliva, Councilmember Aliva, and second alternate, Councilmember Lee, please.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote please?
Alright, Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Aye.
Councilmember Aliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
The City Council designate Ruben Holliver as the 2020 League of California City Annual Conference Voting Delegate and Councilmember Aliva, and also Councilman Lee as alternate, passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, if you don't mind registering me for the conference, so don't believe I'm registered yet, but I'll be to attend. Okay. Thank you very much. Alright, let's now go to item number 11. Oh, sorry, item number 11 is going to be continued to the September 22nd council meeting. So that leaves us with item number 12. This is a study session to receive input on an amendment to the 2016 Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan and replacing updated and update select images. So do we have a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hand it over to Nestor from our Community Development Department to provide the presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Hi, Mayor Holliver, council members. Let me just share my screen real quick. I'm Nestor Guevara. I'm an assistant planner here in the city of Millbrae. This item is for an image amendment to the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan. And before I really get into the presentation, just. There we go. Staff would like to make note that we do have a change for, it is on your packet, attachment one, page 21, I propose that A, we would like to replace with this one. But, but we'll get to that point. So just quickly to give a little bit of background for the MSASP, the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan is updated, the update was adopted by the City Council back in 2016. The specific plan is meant to guide future developments in the area surrounding Millbrae Station. Several developers had come to city staff with designs that emulated buildings in some of the, in some of the images in the document, in the final document, and some of these buildings weren't really meant to kind of guide any sort of development. They might have been in the background or might have meant to show a feature of the building, but not the kind of architectural style that we'd like to see in, that the community would like to see in Millbrae. Also, with that in mind, staff, we looked at 16 images in the plan and the existing document that that could be replaced by images that are more in line with kind of the Millbrae, the Millbrae vision for the future. Staff researched alternate images and compiled a series of suggested replacements. These were taken to the Planning Commission back in, just two weeks ago, just about, August 17th, we had a study session. We went through each of the 16 images up for replacement and showed a few alternate images and had the Planning Commission kind of pick their top one or two images for each replacement image. These replacement images again are meant to kind of communicate or to better communicate the vision of Millbrae for the future. And so for tonight, we'd like to have a study session with those, with those images that the Planning Commission kind of picked as their preferred ones here with the, with the City Council. City Council kind of can choose one of the following replacement images that we'll go through and they're, they're in your packet as attachment one. We can revisit some of the other staff recommendations from attachment two in your packet again, or the City Council can also direct staff to provide different images that are, in either of the attachments are, and are part of the presentation. So with that in mind, or with that said, we'd like to kind of go through each one of the 16 images, show you the existing image and then the proposed preferred images by the Planning Commission. And then if we did, I guess after each, since it's all 16, after each specific image, maybe have a discussion as to which, which one the City Council prefers the most, so we can have that feedback throughout until we get to the last one then. So yeah, starting off, this is.
No, wait, wait, Mayor, I'm sorry. I have a question before Nestor continues. So we're seeing what Planning Commission has already done. We're not getting to see the full set of photographs. I have a problem with that. Our Planning Commission has approved quite a few very modern structures that I would never have approved, but it was already done before it got to council. So I'd rather see everything that staff suggested, not just what Planning Commission shows.
Mr. Mayor, what I might suggest is if we, if we go through these recommendations and then certainly if the City Council, you know, wants us to go back to the drawing board, we can certainly do that. This, this is a study session this evening, you know, with no action and then we're just looking for feedback. Are we on the right track? Do we go back to the drawing board? Are there other images that you'd like to see in terms of the image and style? You know, that the Millbrae, that the city of Millbrae wants to project to the development community and architects.
Okay, I can live with that.
Yeah, let's go through these images that have been selected and if there are comments afterwards or suggestions afterwards, please feel free to bring them up.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so starting off, this is the first image. It's on the, on the document cover page. And this is the existing image in the document. And then we'll go through the two preferred images from the, from the Planning Commission study session. This is the proposed preferred image one, image A. And this is the preferred image two or B. Moving along, the second image is from page 3.4 of the MSASP, a network of public open spaces. This is the existing image. And this is the preferred image A. And preferred image B.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's, let's go through the presentation first before any specific comments on these.
Okay.
Thank you. The third image is from page 3.5 of the final document. It's building step back and this is the existing image. This is preferred or proposed image A. And this is proposed image B. The fourth image is from page 3.5 as well. It's for landscaping with drought tolerant plants. This is the existing image here. And then we have proposed image A. And proposed image B. The fifth image is from page 4.10 here, I believe. It's to accommodate an appropriate amount of vehicular parking and this is the existing image in the document. This is proposed image A. This is proposed image B. Our sixth image is from page 5.11, street beige frontage standards, and this is the existing image. This is proposed image A. Proposed image B. And proposed image C. Image number seven is from page 5.16. It's usable open space, publicly accessible open space. This is the existing image. Then proposed image A. Proposed image B. Our eighth image is the cover for chapter six of the document, private development design standards and guidelines. That's the proposed cover here or the existing cover. And then proposed image A for the cover. And proposed image B. Our ninth image is from page 6.3, gateway design. Here's the existing image. And then proposed image A. So this is the one that we switched out from the, from the staff report. Then the 10th image is from page 6.7, building design, building articulation and massing. This is the existing image. Proposed image A. And proposed image B. Our 11th image is for window arrangement, arrangement from page 6.8, existing image here. Then proposed image A. Proposed image B. And proposed image C. Our 12th image, sustainable building design. It's from page 6.9. Here's the existing image. And then proposed image A. Proposed image B. And proposed image C. Our 13th image for vehicle, vehicular driveway design from page 6.9. Here's the existing image. And here's the proposed image. 14th image, onsite landscaping. Here's the existing image. And here's the proposed image. 15th image is for fixed bus route service. Here's the existing image. And here's proposed image. And our final image, yeah, it's the 16th one is transportation demand management from page 7.13. And then that's obviously the existing image. And then here's our proposed image. And that would be the final image.
Alright, so let's start, let's go to comments and thank you very much for that presentation. Let's go to Councilwoman Aliva.
Who picked the pages?
Well, I can, this is Rosco Bada, I'm the planning manager. So the pages and the different images that were selected were pictures that showed either, you know, buildings in the background that didn't really convey what we are trying to, our vision of Millbrae into the future. And so this was kind of a collaborative effort with staff and what we've seen in our development projects.
Yeah, and I think that these were the final selected images by the Planning Commission.
So, I mean, so we're gonna. It's, this is a planning commission proposal to change the photos?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
No, no, I don't believe so. Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Pappin.
Councilmember Aliva, far too many times now, people have, I've been just appalled at the pictures in our station plan. And the reason developers keep giving us projects we don't like are because of the existing pictures. So I have, I've been personally asking for a long time that we get rid of those ugly pictures.
I'm very aware of that, Councilmember Pappin. Did you propose these particular pictures?
I submitted, I think, a couple of them for suggestions, but the other ones I think came from staff and I think they're good examples.
So what I would propose is this is definitely a subcommittee. This is committee work. I would, I would like to send this to the subcommittee for the development on the west side because it's a specific plan and let them come to us with their proposals, what they, what they see fit.
Are you, are you looking for something different, Councilmember Aliva?
Not at all. I mean. Not at all. I mean, I, I would vote for this right now, but I don't want to spend an hour on A or B.
Well, I, I don't think we're gonna do, be doing that. So I, I would think that, if I might, may I? Yeah, continue.
Go ahead.
Thank you. No, I mean, I think we are, there may be one or two here that I would like to discuss, but I think the work that's been put into this is great, and I'm just so happy we're getting rid of some of the garbage that was in our plan.
And, and I would not dispute that, I'm, I'm totally, I'm totally game to move this forward. But could you take those particulars with the subcommittee and take care of what we need to take care of? Other than at a council meeting to hear comments about certain tree types, or, you know, corners, I mean, I think this is like not what council needs to do tonight.
I, I see where you're going, and I think, I myself just have a couple comments, and I'm hoping we're not getting into tree types and things like that, because that would be different.
My comment is, either I'll make a motion to approve this, and whether it's A or B proposed, I'm, I-
I think they're all, i- if we can get clarification, I think if it's like A, B, and C, they're all included. Is that correct?
I, then I'll make a motion to-
Well, can we maybe have clarification from, from the staff if you're looking for just one photo for each item, or if multiple examples are allowable?
Well, ideally, staff would like input on a preferred, one, one option, one choice. But if the council is comfortable with either of the options provided for each of the images, we can go back to the planning commission, and staff can make a recommendation on one particular picture to be replaced, and the planning commission can make that, make that approval, recommend approval to the city council, because this is an amendment to the plan, it would have to be reviewed by the city council at some point.
So I'll make a motion that we approve-
We, I think we have other comments.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's let everybody comment before making any motions.
We can do it that way.
Yeah, I think all of these are dramatic improvements over existing photos, I think. For example, we should not be showing any photos that have a surface level parking lot, given our recent comments to high speed. Terrible that we're in the existing document. I think also, this can be useful for the general plan update, I don't see really any difference in terms of whether these need to be in the specific plan versus the general plan. I think this, this can help with that as well. But yeah, I, I'd be comfortable, I think we can just go through these one at a time and knock them out pretty quickly, but I'd be open to, you know, multiple examples and for each of these personally. Let's see, Council, Vice Mayor Schneider, I know you had your hand up for a while, and would you like to comment?
Yeah, I, I disagree with this going to a subcommittee. I, I will say that I didn't like anything on number eleven, and nine and twelve, I was still taking notes on the ones before. But I could give some recommendations. Generally though, on the ones that were showing windows, clearly, the old pictures are horrible, and yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Pappin, that's why we've been getting projects like the original Burger King project that was horrendous. So we need to change them, and we need to change them quickly. However, most of the window shots are very modern. And if you go back and think of the comments from the people on Hemlock when they were looking at Sarah Station, and they said, why couldn't we have more examples of those fake balconies of different kinds of windows, other than sort of the aluminum frame or vinyl framed windows? I'd like to see some more options on windows, but I think that might have been eleven, because my notes say absolutely not on eleven.
Could you tell me what page, please, Vice Mayor?
No, all I had time was to write down no on, or yes on A, no, B, blah, I didn't, it was too fast for me.
Number eleven, page twenty-four of the attachment on the agenda.
Is that twenty?
See, that's horrible.
That's it, yeah, this is eleven, the existing one, and these are the proposed, yeah.
And that's a better building, but they're all ultra-modern.
Right, can I, may I, Vice Mayor?
Please.
Okay, so right there, Nestor, can you go back? You've got the, yeah, that's horrendous. But could you go back? You had like the Sarah, it's on page nineteen. You have the gateway project, but that is not the project we approved. So we approved certain modifications there, it's on page nineteen on the, yeah. Okay, that is not exactly what we, yeah, we didn't add, we had modifications to that. So if you're gonna put that in there, I would like to see the final approved pictures that the council approved on that, because there was supposed to be a, a line across the roofing there and stuff like that. So I don't want to send the wrong message. Can we please get what the council approved?
I, I'll look for the final approved, yeah, I'll look for that.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. And then there's also two, you've got another one from the gateway project, and I don't think that was the final either. So I have an objection to that, I'm trying to find it here, my, page twenty-five. Again, I do not think that's what we approved, and I, I would prefer that that not be in there, we have other pictures, yeah, wait. Well, I think that one, we changed some of the windows on too. That's the veterans' one, so I mean, if the council, let's not go with renditions that we did not finally approve. That one might be correct, I don't know, I don't remember. But-
That was certainly the, yeah.
Yeah, page twenty-
I remember the original design had sort of a diamond design on it, this is definitely one of the updated design.
Yeah, that one might be, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure here, we're not sending the wrong message, because the council put a lot of time in. And then page, sorry, page twenty-five B, I don't think that's the final either, so I mean, you, you have it, I love the one above it, A. I, and I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, I like keeping a lot of different ones in there, because I think there's a lot of really good pictures we got. Moving forward here, I would like, as a final note, it's page fifty on the, as you're sliding through here, because the page numbers don't match what you see on the computer.
So, oh, sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner Pappin, on page fifty on the slide, or the, on the slideshow, or on the-
I know, it's hard to tell here. It's page ten, but it looks like fifty as you're scrolling through of seventy-three. So if you are on your computer, there seems to be seventy-three pages. I got to fifty.
Do, do you know which, which kind of existed?
Yeah, it's publicly accessible open space. But they're the added pictures.
Mr. Mayor? One of these ones, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I think you can do, but I like the ones you have as the additional, which if you keep going to the end, I mean, that's okay, but like, if you could get to fif, slide fifty of seventy-three down at the end, do you have all those extra ones?
I, I unfortunately don't have them on this, on the slideshow, no, I don't, sorry.
It's, it's, it's on the website, anyway. I think these open spaces are really nice, the extra ones you have there. Am I the only one seeing this, Mr. Mayor? Anybody else?
Are you talking about A or B, or both of them?
Um, both, I think those are nice open space, could be in addition to.
Both, okay.
You see, you've got the green umbrellas and stuff there, I think that's kind of cool. But it's, I just think we can do a little better on the open space.
Well, I'm confused, where are we?
I'm on the website, I mean, the item on the city council website.
I think there's-
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think Councilmember can share her screen if, if that would help.
Oh, really? You think I'm that talented? Thank you for that, but I'm not.
It's a study session.
It's a study session, maybe the city manager, do you have it on your screen?
Can we go- We, we can get it up, I, I think, I, I mean, you know, hearing the discussion, like, for example, even though this is open space, I actually think this is a better image of windows that are recessed than provided image than, than we had, and so I think generally, you know, are we going down the right path? Is this the image that we want to reflect to the design community when they come to Millbrae and they're hired by a developer to open the book and, and say, okay, what's Millbrae about, what are they looking for? And, and that's, that's the purpose of this, right? We can point to and say, this, this is the image and vision of the city, so we can use the multiple photos.
I think we should.
We don't have to limit ourselves to just one, there's plenty of places in the specific plan that we can use and point to images and examples.
That would be great.
I think that's a good, good question, is, is, what is the, the process tonight, are we, is the preference to have multiple photos, or to select one for each?
I like-
One, one for each item, maybe we could do a quick rapid fire on that.
My, my preference is multiple.
All our names, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Lee?
Multiple.
Okay. Hey, Councilmember Pappin?
Multiple.
You said multiple? Okay, Councilwoman Oliva?
Anything.
Anything, okay. Vice, Vice Mayor Schneider?
Multiple, however, not if they are all modern.
You can choose.
If we're gonna use these, I've had my hand up, and I thought Gina was just commenting on something I said, because I had more to say. We have a downtown that has some beautiful Mediterranean-style buildings. There's different windows that go with a Mediterranean-style building than with a contemporary building. So I think it would behoove us to have a collection of examples that reflect different architectural styles. So otherwise, we won't keep getting modern contemporary glass monoliths. This picture, by the way, city manager, I look at that and I see astroturf, so not one of my favorites.
Yeah, yeah, same.
So let's be careful with living-
I agree, I, I-
Mayor, I have my hand up too.
Prefer multiple images as well? Okay, I prefer multiple images as well. So I, I don't think we have to go through these one by one and select one image for each one. Okay, let's just see if anybody from the council has, has specific comments about any of-
I do, Mayor, I have my hand up too.
Let's start with, okay, let's start with Vice Mayor Schneider. I'm trying to get these all out of the way at this point.
I, I already gave mine for number eleven, if they could give us some more options on eleven, and I'm sorry, nine and twelve, you went so fast, I didn't even mark a preference. So coming back to us with a couple of examples with a little bit more time, I only got this document today at, like, the afternoon, so I didn't do what Councilwoman Pappin did. But I'd like real examples as opposed to drawings, if we can get them. They just look more living.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Oliva?
Yes. And I, I'm feeling very, very strongly about this whole proposal here. First of all, we have multimillion-dollar developments that are coming into our city. It is not up to the five of us to worry about the pictures that are in, that are in our booklet. We have, we have got to know that there's professionals out there that are better than us. And quite frankly, this is a complete and total waste of our time, and nobody here is qualified to say what picture is better. These guys are coming, these guys and these companies are coming to us to make proposals based on what we want, and we can, we can critique this till the end, once they're in front of us. But if we change this booklet, we're wasting time and we're wasting money, because the layout's gonna have to be different with everything that wants to be done with what we have. We have a subcommittee. If they want to change the photos, that's why we have a subcommittee. We're doing committee work as a council, as council members, and this is not something that our developers are not even gonna engage in. And I know Councilmember Pappin's gonna say, well, they looked at this photo and they gathered this photo. We have the opportunity to change it once it's in front of us.
No.
Yes, we do.
It's too late then, look at Sarah Station, it was too late.
Councilmember Schneider, we are not held by a photo.
Yes, we have been, I'm sorry, we have been already.
No, we have been.
All right, okay, one, one at a time, please, one at a time.
We have not been held by a photo. This is honestly, I don't even want to participate in this discussion to which photo is better, because I think it's like so not where we need to be. We are, we have the largest transportation center west of the Mississippi. And we are worried about what our photo album looks like. Let the subcommittee do committee work, and let's move on.
Okay, let's go to Councilwoman Pappin.
Well, as a part of the subcommittee, I think we can do a lot of this tonight, and I'll have to respectfully disagree with Councilmember Oliva, that I don't want to look like, I'm sorry to say, South San Francisco in the boxes, that by doing this tonight, excuse me, I know, and that's what I'm saying, the subcommittee, as a member, I like this, I think we can get away with this tonight in a very special way. And it also helps developers coming to town to see what the planning commission likes, what we like. This gives them a guidance, which we have never had before, because they keep saying, well, this was in your plan. Well, I want to take those crappy pictures out of the plan, put in some good ones. As a member of the subcommittee, I think this can be done tonight. And if we have any, you know, like, take out the astroturf or whatever, comments like that, let's get this done, so that people, developers who want to come here and spend millions of dollars have good guidance as to what Millbrae's expectations are, the quality of designs we want to see in Millbrae. They look at this and they say, oh, we get it now, because I would like to point the city council to today's newspaper. The hotel proposed over by the Weston, I'm sorry, that kind of moxie design, I don't like. I don't think that's what, that to me is boxes, I could do this with my Legos. If you want, look in today's paper, I'm holding the picture up, so that's what I want to stop.
Let's, let's stay, let's not, let's not talk about items not on the agenda tonight, let's be very careful here. And the moxie is not in front of us, but your point is taken.
It was in the paper, sir, so that's the only reason I mentioned.
All right. Okay, Councilman Lee?
Well, I, okay, there's two things, one, the planning, I heard comments about the planning commission. Planning commission, as I understand, and our attorney can clarify, is his own, has his own quasi-authority to, to, to approve plans, they are not an advisory committee to the council, council per se. They do approve certain things, and some things go up to the council, but mostly, I understand they're not, they, they have a role in approving plans. Second of all, I, you know, I don't, I think that the, using the example of whatever, it's not a good idea either, because you're saying like, okay, this is an example of what we want. Okay, then suppose that was the logic, and that means every building is gonna look the same, or similar. I don't know if you want something like that. Second, third thing is that I don't know any developers who's actually come up and said, this is, you know, the way it's gonna look, and what I've always seen, the developers, especially in TOD two, was this is the way it's gonna be, this is what, what you're gonna have to accept. And that's what happened, and a lot of these, and a lot of these developers ran these designs down, down, and very little changes. So I think as, as a case-by-case basis, and I think in a general, they can address that in the general plan, that say, hey, we want kind of a traditional Mediterranean, and maybe a modern Mediterranean look, or something like that, in general. But I really hesitate, and I like, I like your comments, Councilwoman Pappin, and Vice Mayor Schneider, but I have to agree somewhat with, with the Councilwoman Oliva, we are not, we're not, we don't need to approve a photo album tonight, because it's kind of a waste of time. It's not gonna have any practical use, because I can tell you, as a planning commissioner, a former planning commissioner, you're not gonna have a lot of say unless you say something that's drastically going to improve- going to improve their project. They're not going to listen. They're gonna ram the project through. And so, you know, I, or, or if you want every, every building to look like a cookie cutter, then that's the other risk you, you, you come to. Thank you.
I thank you, Councilman Lee. Let's see, City Attorney Conrad, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I don't, don't want to take the enthusiasm out of the discussion, but I should note that our, our, our new housing laws, that we've already talked about tonight, do restrict your discretion to mandate subjective changes to some of these, to the housing project, housing wouldn't be commercial, the housing projects that, that qualify under those statutes. So you might spend a lot of time honing these works, but when it comes down to enforcing them, if you don't get the cooperation of the builders, it may not be useful. So I just wanted to, again, don't want to take the wind out of the sails of the conversation. But on the other hand, this may all be something about guidelines that you can only apply to certain types of budget.
Yeah, Mr., if, if I could piggyback on the City Attorney's comments, I think that's a great point. And as we continue to proceed, as the City Attorney mentioned, we, we have to eliminate the subjective criteria and get into objective criteria, which is going to in essence make general plans like specific plans that we, you know, prescribe, you know, with absolute objectiveness, what, what the design criteria is. So for example, windows must be recessed three inches, you know, whatever, whatever the design criteria is, and that we have to be very specific. So I think, I think City Attorney's correct, planning is correct, that as we move forward, we are going to have to be specific, or we're going to just accept whatever developer, you know, submits to the city. So I think that's a very good point by, by Mike.
All right. So, let's see. Vice Mayor Schneider?
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilman Lee, I, I understand what you're saying. At the same time, I think that's why with a couple of multiple pictures, I think they do matter. When I first met the Sarah Station people, they said that they chose their design based on the train station design. And in fact, the Republic Urban said the same thing. They took it from that horrendously ugly, inefficient train station, which High Speed Rail is saying that they're gonna tear down and redo and turn into a box. So I think we need to start standing up for ourselves. And as someone who worked legislation for years, just because a law is passed does not mean that the law is gonna be, is not gonna be tested. And, you know, if the state thinks that they're gonna take away all of our local planning power so that we all have these basically boxes sitting throughout the city, we gotta fight back on that. And I hope that those of you going to the League of California Cities Convention are gonna push back on that. We have some beautiful buildings in our town. They don't all have to look like that, but we should respect our history, and we should get some good, strong design guidelines. So I'm, I'm with Councilwoman Pepin. It's only 8:25, or bring it back to us with more options, but give us a little bit of time, maybe a, a voting sheet, and we put our preferences, and you do the numbers ahead of time. If tonight is, we've been going since 5:30, but I, I agree, I want these pictures out. They do look at the pictures and say, ah, Millbrae will accept this crappy-looking building.
I, I don't object to just adding a new picture. I have no problem with it. I just don't, 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 just tempering your, your expectations, because.
I hear you. Thank you.
People want to say, oh, I want it to look like the, the, our station, that's what they're gonna present, and nothing's gonna change. Not anything we, we present in our specific plan.
All right. So I think, you know, we've had quite a bit of discussion here. We've heard some comments from Councilwoman, from Vice Mayor Schneider about having other types of designs besides, you know, these modern architecture that we see in images. Other than that, I haven't really heard much objection to the images that have been presented here. And I think there's a lot in here that for potential developers to work with. And, you know, I would be open to, to moving forward with all of the options here, and maybe also including some other types of design.
Looking for a motion.
Other types of design styles to accommodate Vice Mayor Schneider's request.
Is that a motion?
But.
I'm making a motion.
Sure.
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second that. Thank you, Mayor.
So, I mean, it sounds like that's not really an official action, but maybe this can come back with a few additional items.
I think we need to move. The motion is to accept this with the multiple pictures. I think that was the motion, if I might ask for clarification. Ms. Oliva, or who made the motion?
Well, Ms. Mayor, if I may. So, so this is a study session, I think as Roscoe Monard or.
Oh, sorry.
Manager said, it is a technical amendment to the specific plan. So once we, I think we have direction from the City Council in terms of how we shift and pivot, you know, to the image. So we will do that. We'll present that to the Planning Commission, and then we'll have to come back to the City Council for the legislative act to amend the specific.
And, uh, City Mayor, through the Mayor?
Yes.
City Manager, what is actually the, the job or the task of our subcommittee for this? Because they were tasked with the west side of the El Camino for any developments. So when this fill that, that void, I mean, why, why would it go, can we get a recommendation from the subcommittee from this?
Well, I think, I think the outcome of this meeting this evening, as we're winding down, we already have enough information from the council.
Well, we will, just on that, just in that line of, of fire here, what, what is the task of the subcommittee that we, we put together, what, last meeting or whatever it is?
So the, the task of that subcommittee is to review projects and policy for recommendation to City Council on the west side of the specific planning area. This actual amendment includes the, the entire, both east, west, north, south, not, not just the west side.
This is specific plan, though. So that would include, you're right, that would include the west. So this could not go to subcommittee for recommendation?
It, it could go to the subcommittee for recommendation.
It sounds like, it sounds like the direction has already been given by the council as to how to move forward on this. I don't think there's much that the subcommittee can add, much value to add at this point.
I, I think we do have enough direction, at least in terms of the, again, the, the design image that we want to project in our plans, that an architect for the first time can pick up and say, okay, what's Millbrae about? You know, what is it that they're looking for? And this provides that image when they go to the initial drawing board for their client. I have received, I actually have received information from, from architects that, you know, they have said they really don't know what the city wants. Not, not in the specific plan, but all of, all of the city. So this is the first step.
All right. So I think direction has been given to our city staff. Mr. Conrad, do you have another comment?
Well, I just want to say, I mean, obviously, this is posed as future amendment to this specific plan. So while we either take this as recommendations, but is it my understanding that this is gonna be then brought back through the Planning Commission with some specific pictures, and that's gonna be posed through the council as an amendment to the specific plan? It's just the initial editorial works in the middle of our plan.
It sounds, it sounds like this is basically direction to staff for how to amend the specific plan. And I think it's been given pretty clear.
Right. I don't think we need to go back to the Planning Commission for this. They put in their two cents, and I think, if I might, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, yeah.
Through the chair. Yeah. And we as elected representatives, we're trying to set a standard for what the community feels, the quality of the designs that come in here. And I understand the law that's coming through here, but I think this is extremely important, this guidance that we're giving staff to change, get rid of those butt-ugly pictures, put in different ones here so that we are at least showing the community we care enough to have a higher standard that we're pointing out to developers that come to town. So I think we've given the instructions we need to. I don't think it needs to go back to planning. Let's finalize.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Conrad?
I understand how Councilmember Pepin feels. However, state law, state law requires an amendment to the specific plan first be approved by this, by the planning commission. So we are gonna need to have a formal amendment with the specific photos that we're adding, and have that through the planning commission with a notice hearing, and through the City Council with a notice here. That's just the way the law fits.
Okay.
Mayor, can I have one quick comment?
All right. That sounds like a good plan. And also, you know, as mentioned, this, okay. Yeah. Let's see, Councilwoman Oliva, you had your, your hand up?
I did, please.
Okay, let's, final comments here.
Final comment. This is study session. So the staff wanted guidance. I think it's pretty clear how, how we want to go. So where it goes is not necessarily to the Planning Commission, but they wanted guidance. And like our attorney said, if we change it, then we have to go through that. So this is study session, just guidance. They heard our voices, right?
Yep, yes.
I'm sorry, you're frozen.
We did.
Yes. All right. And Vice Mayor Schneider?
Um, just to staff, because I would have brought up the no more surface parking lot photos. If, I haven't looked at the specific plan in a couple of years, can you go through the whole thing and make sure we have no photos of surface parking lots, unless it's saying, this is really bad? If we're gonna do some changes, do that too, please. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And as, as mentioned earlier, I think a lot of this work can also be, a lot of these images can probably also be used for the general plan. And I hope that that update is still moving along, and that updating the specific plan does not interfere with updating the land use element of the general plan, because I think that's incredibly important with several other developments coming underway throughout the city. All right. So with that, let's go to council comments. And perhaps we can begin with Councilman Lee?
Yes, thank you. So the CMEC, the Congestion Management, the Government Quality Subcommittee of the CKAG, the, which is the county's government organizing body, the planning body, met and talked about, had a presentation on bike pedestrian grants. And one of the comments that I wanted to make was emphasis on commuting on bicycles, and that we haven't finished our, we have a big gap between Millbrae to South San Francisco. And if we're really seriously talking about reducing car emissions, then we ought to create a pathway for bikes, bicyclists to go to work, to bike to work safely. So I'm hoping, Vice Mayor, that you, that you would support that as well. And I've been pushing that at the associate bear governments, which are also, we'll talk about that in a minute. And also at the CMEC meeting, we talked about a list of, of transportation modifications to roads. There was a list that was produced, and it's kind of a list of the cities produced. And one of the, one of the, one of the proposals for Millbrae is the dieting, dieting, meaning shrinking and narrowing El Camino, and also redoing part of the Rollins Road, Millbrae Avenue intersection. So we're talking about over $2.5 billion. That's, that's going to be dispersed in the Bay Area, and in particularly in San Mateo County. And then at the associate bear governments, which represents 150 cities in the Bay Area, and the executive meeting, there was a presentation on regional housing allocation methodology. And it's gonna focus on equality, equity, and, and community access. And so I sent that to all the council members in the county, myself and Mayor Rich Garberino sits on the executive committee. So I hope that council members, if you have any questions, please contact one of us. And also, we have, we have another Lion's Drive-In movie. Lion, Pat, Jim, do you know what day that is?
Uh, sorry, I don't. It's coming up. I think it's the last Friday. When is it?
Last Friday. And I don't know, Tom, if you happen to know what movie was chosen. I wasn't informed.
Mackenzie is in the meeting. She, she knows the date. Sorry.
What movie did they choose?
Hey, folks, this is Mackenzie. We still have one day left for individuals to choose the movie online. So Onward is in the running right now, as well as Remember the Titans. So if folks wanna, wanna go online and vote, they can do that.
Where online? Do they come and go and vote?
I'm gonna need to look that up really quick. It's a bit.ly. I think it's September Millbrae movie. Just give me.
Can we repost that on the city website and next door?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go to Vice Mayor Schneider.
Okay. Well, first to respond to Councilman Lee, at our last CKAG B-PAC meeting, we did talk about the criteria using, to use in selecting projects. First of all, real big emphasis on shovel-ready, and not being as lenient of giving a city an extra year, and then an extra year, and then an extra year. But connectivity is hopefully gonna be part of that. And between South City, Millbrae, San Bruno, and Millbrae, we have been applying for grants to try, to try to help with that connectivity issue. Some of the other bike routes that are used commercially for worker, people to get to work are so full of potholes, it's really dangerous out by the airport. So there is, the next grant is due May 15. Staff has already drafted it. They sent me a version. So thank you, staff. And we will be looking at those, I guess, at our September meeting on that. But it also helps in the grant writing to talk about, this is the trick in grant writing, any disadvantaged communities we may have, any communities of color that we have. I do believe Millbrae is a majority-minority community, but we don't always express it that way. And that could help us get grants in the future. So moving on to B-PAC, the San Francisco Noise Roundtable meets in October, where we will hopefully be voting on a grant somewhat within whatever the county budget will allow. We had originally been looking at $50,000 to look at the historical data of the noise that hits Millbrae, traditionally Millbrae the most, but also San Bruno, Burlingame, and Hillsborough. It's called spectral analysis. It's, it's looking at that low-frequency rumble that vibrates our homes. And, you know, right now, only three homes in Millbrae qualify for the insulation program. If we can prove that low-frequency is a big problem, then perhaps it will open up more homes to becoming available to apply for insulation programs, funding from the, from SFO. The other thing that I learned sadly, the, the new hotel built at SFO has a curve in it. And we're gonna be testing whether that curve is acting like a satellite dish, and collecting noise, both ground noise and airplane noise, and directing it basically from the hotel towards City Hall. And it's clearly, since the skin went on a year and a half ago, it's gotten noisier on that. It turns out that hotel was approved in 1992 by the city and county of San Francisco, and never had to go to San Mateo County planning processes. So when you talk about noise bouncing, right now, San Francisco Airport can do whatever it wants, and however it affects us, is not studied at all. It doesn't go to the Airport Land Use Committee, doesn't go to SFO noise. It's just done by the city and county of San Francisco, and it's outrageous. Okay, Fire, Fire Shared Services, we temporarily postponed our meeting. I see the chief on there. Chief, thank you for everything you and your deputies have been doing. And I don't see Chief Barron on here, but I will say that our residents have been really nervous about fire hitting Millbrae. There was a lightning strike. I can't quite pinpoint it, but between Burlingame and Millbrae, up near 280, that our firefighters put away almost immediately, or we very likely could have been like what's happening at the CZU fire. So I am very grateful. Our residents are grateful. However, I would love for staff to come to us in the next meeting or the following meeting with some kind of plan where we as a community come together with vegetation cleanouts. However, I would love for staff to come to us in the next meeting or the following meeting with some kind of plan where we as a community come together with vegetation cleanouts. There have been some letters passed through. Chief Barron has been great at getting back to them and getting our fire prevention staff up on our streets where you have, we have one-way streets, believe it or not, in Millbrae. It's usually a street that's above it, and it's trees overgrowing from the house on another street, overgrowing their street. And that seems to be a recurrent problem on a number of our streets. But if we could start getting serious on doing some fire cleanups, I think all of our residents would breathe easier, and no pun intended. And MCAC, I tried to get an update. Our Community Enhancement Committee has created software that will allow our residents to nominate a house that looks really pretty, or a house that's got great drought-tolerant garden, or a storefront that looks fantastic, or the Halloween decorations, or the winter holiday decorations. And we are trying to get it on the city website. City Clerk, were you able to get an update for me? On the status? The software is written. It just has to be ported over to the city's website.
So we use Granicus, which have a lot of restrictions. So we're still looking into that, but I would need more details from the Enhancement Committee.
Okay, I will try to connect the two of you. And that explains why I get Granicus emails now. I didn't know why I started getting those. Okay. And with that, MCAC, if you haven't had a chance, and I don't have the address, the final utility box was completed. It would be lovely if we could have a quick staff report of the five boxes. They're working on their working plan, work plan for next year about what should be the next art projects. But they're all lovely, but the final one is on El Camino Real. It's in front of an apartment complex, and it's absolutely fantastic. And our senior artist did one right behind Pape's Meat Market. Please go check them out. It's nice to have some good examples. And thank you to both of those committees for all their work.
Okay, let's go. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Let's go to Councilwoman Pappin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to suggest, if possible, that this new hotel that was in the paper come to the city, a council for review. This design was evidently just submitted, so it was kind of shocking, but I request that, please. I'm looking forward to the city taking on the agenda items for regarding increasing the minimum wage and limiting the charges for Grubhub and a few others. I understand those are on our future agendas. I'd also like to suggest to City of Millbrae finalize their comments to the high-speed rail. That we get that prominently on our website. The lawyers have finished their comments. So please, I know it's very confusing as to commenting about the EIR from high-speed rail, but getting it on the website and then also distributing it to other cities so that they know what our comments were, our objections to the EIR proposed. Sharing that information, I think, is key to gathering support moving forward for all of us, and also getting it out to our elected representatives. I know it's a little technical, but it's important. I would like to compliment staff. I stopped by the cooling center at the Jacuti Room, and it was really being used this weekend. So again, compliments, people really needed a place to socially distance and stay cool. That was really important. Want to emphasize, too, we still have time for the census, so I'm hoping the city will get out there and give it a final push in any way we can. Social media, ensuring that everybody knows they need to be counted. And it's strictly confidential. So if you live in an apartment and you're afraid the landlord's going to find out how many people actually live there, the landlord's not going to know. We need to know. The City of Millbrae, the federal government needs to know. It is funding for the city, the county, and the state moving forward, and we cannot afford to lose that funding. I would like to suggest, too, I know we have ballot box coming to the city location. I would like to suggest that we can get one at the fire station, at the top of the hill, if possible, and maybe at a couple of the high schools. Because voting is going to be very important. If we can get the secure drop boxes at multiple locations in Millbrae, I think that's going to be very, very important here. There was talk earlier that the days for the art and wine have passed. We are trying to re-envision art and wine and also the car show in a new and improved way. So we haven't given up on some of these things. I know staff is trying to talk to some of the vendors and the merchants. So we're hoping that we can do sort of a virtual art and wine, where the vendors can come to town and stay, and people can still visit our restaurants, socially distancing, and yet we can still get some energy back into the city. The MTC Plan 2050, there was a discussion recently that they were pushing for a study of a strategy where they would charge on all the lanes on 101, yeah, Highway 101. Thankfully, our local transit agencies objected in the right way, that that would not be a preferred strategy for San Mateo County. I will note, certain things happen that come down from MTC staff, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission staff, suggesting certain things. And I'm very proud that our representatives spoke up against that. We have, to reduce greenhouse gases, there are more viable alternatives that would work in San Mateo County. And then the Blue Ribbon Transportation Recovery Task Force is clearly.
Councilwoman Pappin?
You're in and out.
Councilwoman Pappin?
You froze, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, am I here?
You are now, sir.
Okay, sorry, I was going to ask about the reporting on some of the MTC suggestions. Are they also not going to be moving forward on the 55 mile an hour speed limits?
They are going to be.
On that suggestion?
They are going to be studying that to reduce greenhouse gases as well. Again, these are studies that we are trying to suggest would not be preferred for San Mateo County. There are, to reduce greenhouse gases in San Mateo County, it would be preferred to, hey, why don't you give free public transit out of the airport? Because there's 43,000 employees there. So I mean, there are other viable alternatives to reduce greenhouse gases that they need to study as well. So we're trying to emphasize that. As a final note, we have the Blue Ribbon Transportation Recovery Committee, which we are just trying to primarily focus on making public transit more safe. So people feel safe and secure to go back onto public transit, given all the COVID restrictions. And the operators as well also need to feel safe and secure. Whether you're taking BART, you're taking SAM Trans, you're taking the train, we need to have standardized safety measures moving forward. And then there's also a big move for equity on public transportation. So please stay tuned. It is something that we are committed to doing and ensuring that everyone who wants to take public transportation or has to take it is safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to Councilwoman Aliva.
Thank you. I probably don't have as much as everybody had before me, but I want to thank the firefighters, because we all know what everybody's going through in these hard times. And they're on the front line. Along with them are sheriffs. And I'm very fortunate to serve on the SAL board and very grateful to all of the work that gets done at the SAL board level. They too, obviously, with COVID, are going through some really tough times, because we're not allowed to have all the programs that we've been fortunate to provide for the kids because of the gatherings. So hopefully, we're going to be able to get creative and take care of the needs of the kids that belong to the SAL activities. I just got an email from Chris Del Rosa on the homeless issues, and I'm not in charge of the homeless in Millbrae, but the Subcommittee, Councilmember Lee, we need as you know, I've sent you a couple of texts in the last couple months or days, or whatever you want to call them. We definitely have an issue going on. And I talked to the city manager a few times. Homelessness in Millbrae has grown. And I don't know if it's because we're not, it's more apparent, because there's not as many people out and about. But yet, this is an issue that we're going to have to deal with. And if we want to do what we're doing with regards to the MSAP, the beautiful booklet and brochure that we want to send out to developers, or Councilmember Pappin, if you want to work with all the transportation companies, we need to come together and know that this will always be an issue unless we put the line on it. We need to be the ones, to be the leaders of saying it is not okay what is happening, getting on BART, getting on trains, going to the airport and getting dropped off in Millbrae. These people need to be dealt with. And Chris Del Rosso, I will reach out to you. And Councilmember Wayne Lee, we really need to regroup with our Subcommittee.
I agree. The COVID situation is causing more economic hardship on a lot of people. So I'm not surprised that we're going to see many more homeless people, unfortunately. So I mean, the food banks have grown 100% in need and use. So this is just the beginning, and it's not going to get better for a while.
Yeah, and I know I have a good partner in you, so we're going to, we've got to put our heads together and make some suggestions to bring to this, the five of us, so that we can make some strides towards some sort of solution for Millbrae. So with COVID, I know that the downtown has been, you know, obviously suffering. Yet I want to thank staff, because I know that they have worked really super hard to do what they can to help any businesses that are there. I know that it's, the restaurants are like suffering, of course. I heard that in San Francisco, which is not us, of course, but San Francisco, 2,000 restaurants will not be reopening. So, you know, you could take those numbers and be proportional to what we're going to be at. But it's not just the restaurants, you know, guys, we got, we got all kinds of things going on. We have dentists, we have grocery stores, we have meat shops, we have trinket shops. It's, this is huge. And I think our staff, I've witnessed our staff, I mean, Alicia, I witnessed her going door to door to try to help these businesses out. And I'm very appreciative, being a small business owner, as you know, we feel it too, no doubt. And I just want to bring up a little bit personal with what's going on in my own business, because it affects all of us, and that's the rents and housing. And Councilmember Schneider, I'm sorry to say, I haven't experienced the raising of rents. I actually see people that aren't paying rents. Rents are something that both commercial and residential landlords are suffering. And those are the backbone of our economy. So I want to be very cautious of what's going on in Sacramento that trickles down into our community, like 3088, that is not making tenants basically pay rent. And I think that we need to be on top of that as a community and make sure that we, as a community, which I think we're at about 50% of homeowners that live in Millbrae and invest in homeownership, that we watch what's going on. It's craziness, craziness. They're reacting. They are reacting in Sacramento, and it's very disturbing. On a positive note, I want to end. We have one homegrown nonprofit in the City of Millbrae, and it's called One Hit Away. One Hit Away will not be meeting because of the COVID, but One Hit Away is very, very cool, very dear nonprofit that deals with head injuries. And it's for athletes, and it's also for anybody that has any sort of head trauma. And the City Blockas, they usually hold an event right at this time of the year. I've invited many of you guys to go. That has done an incredible amount of research to help with brain injury in athletes. And actually, the whole aspect of brain injury and treatment is growing. And they will not be able to be live in their event, no golf tournament or auction, but they will have a virtual fundraiser, and I invite you all to come. It's really cool that they started in Millbrae. They're homegrown, and I'm really happy to be part of that organization. So thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, just to wrap up quickly here, let's see, I attended the Caltrain Local Policymakers Group meeting two weeks ago. And one thing that was interesting that came up was that the, there was a lot of discussion about the high-speed rail, EIR. One thing that a lot of people did not know is that the EIR did not accommodate for Caltrain's moderate growth scenario that was identified in the Caltrain Business Plan. Basically, all of the environmental impacts that high-speed rail is anticipating only account for 10 trains in each direction. That would be six Caltrain trains and four high-speed rail trains per hour. Under the moderate growth scenario, that would go up to 12 trains per hour, eight Caltrains, and four speed rails in either direction. So because of that, I think there was a lot of demand that high-speed rail pay their fair share. Grade separations, there are going to need to be a lot more grade separation because of all the time that the gates are going to be down when different trains are passing through. And a little commitment from good rail to do. I attended the Districts Commission meeting in August, and there was some discussion about the new friendship cities that were recently approved by the council, Don Guan and Raula. And some discussion from the commission was that the city rules to have a written friendship city agreement with both of those cities. Just to, you know, be clear of what the expectations are and what roles are of each city and relationship. So maybe that's something that our staff can be working on, you know, we can work off of the other friendship city, it's sister city agreements that have already been signed. But it would be good to get those going. And also, Mr. Williams, if you can clarify, was the data center RFP, was that released last week?
Mr. Mayor, I need to, I do not believe it was, but there were some final touches that, trying to get that out the door ASAP. I think Key Lim is on. Yeah, Key's in the meeting. Key, was that, did we release that on Thursday?
No, we have not. It is being reviewed one more time, and then we can release it this week.
Okay, perfect. Moving forward on that project? Yes, Mr. Williams?
I was going to say, we can put down on the agenda and give the council on that thing. We did retain the surprises of a outside consulting expert that works with data centers and attracts data center, so we can provide an update to the council.
Okay, yeah, maybe an informational update. I certainly would not want to delay the RFP from being released. So let's go ahead and release it when it's ready to go. And, yeah, I look forward to having an informational update. And also, I believe the contract with Block is either very close to being finalized, but there were a couple of very minor details that had not been settled at the time of our special council meeting in August. But I believe that is going to be finalized, I think, believe this week. Is that correct, Mr. Williams?
Yes, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. We will be scheduling a groundbreaking very soon.
Perfect, yeah. So we obviously look forward to that. And, you know, the sooner, the better. We are anxious to get that project underway. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn, and we will be back for a regularly scheduled meeting on September. Vice Mayor Schneider, do you have one final comment?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. When you mentioned, when you were talking about Caltrain surprise, are they going to be submitting comments to high-speed rail? Or do they have another channel, because it's one transportation agency to another? I've been getting the public asking.
I believe they already did, if they haven't already, but yeah.
Okay.
And I know many of the other cities on the corridor are submitting comments as well. Okay, so with that, we will adjourn, and we will be back, our regular meeting of September 22nd. Thank you all, and have a good night.